The Village Board of Oregon to order for Monday, October 17th. Candy, could we have, roll please.
Bashin.
Here.
Dilo.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Camden.
Here.
And Watson.
Here.
Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. So, we are going to change up the agenda a little bit. We're going to move up 7A, 1 and 2, which is the library. Somebody has to go to another meeting, so if we can have the library folks come on up. All right, Jenny, you and Jeff are on.
Hey, everybody. So, we are here to talk about the library bids that we received last Thursday. I think the tab was in your bid. So, I'm going to talk a little bit, and then Jeff will go through that with you all to kind of help understand. So, I just want to give a bit of a history to remind people. A couple of months ago, we did an initial budget. We found out we were way over budget, so we did some redesign, tried to come in, reduced the size of the library a little bit, reduced, reorganized, did a bunch of things. We did a second, paid a professional estimator to provide a second budget for us, for the budget that you guys approved at the village board meeting. At that point, we were within the budget that we wanted to do, we expected. We did everything we thought we could possible to be able to comment at budget. Then we sent the bids out. You can see them up there, and again, Jeff will go through them. Unfortunately, the bids came back higher than our budget allows. So, there's some things that we're trying to do. Obviously, we'll be doing some additional fundraising. Jennifer is going to talk just a little bit about some of the grants and some of the things that we've already put in for, some opportunities that we see. Again, nothing that is available right now, but things that are potentials. And then Jeff's going to kind of go through the bid and talk through what we kind of see as things that we're hoping the village is willing to work with us on. So, Jennifer, if I can turn it over to you, that'd be great.
Yeah, and Jeff Rowe has a PDF. This wasn't in your packet, but I just want to make sure you can see some of the potential funding sources that could be coming our way. So, the first section is, the first section at the top is funding that we do expect, but we just don't know the exact number. So, that includes the Ellers investment. So, that's the borrowing funds. Lisa helped us invest through Ellers securely to get some interest on the borrowed funds until we need those for paying the bills, since we're not being able to move forward. So, that's going to generate some interest there. And then additionally, we will be collecting library impact fees until the borrowing is done. So, that's a careful estimate. If any one of the planned development projects moves forward, like the Coil project that has housing, then there would be additional revenue above and beyond that that would be applicable to the project. Again, after the borrowing takes place, then any further impact fees will go to offset the debt service. So, moving forward, after the final borrowing, those funds will go towards the debt service to pay back the village borrowing. In addition, at the bottom, there's some grant funding opportunities that we have or plan to apply for. It's unfortunate the timing on some of these that we don't know now. We were hoping to know. The first one is funding through Senator Baldwin's office. We applied much, much, much earlier in the year. They were hoping to have a decision by October. Now, that decision's been delayed till December. So, that grant application was for a million dollars. We're currently in the fiscal year '23 appropriations budget draft right now, so we won't know till December if that funding is approved or not. We could get a million dollars, we couldn't get nothing. And so, we just don't know, unfortunately. We also, the Wisconsin Office of Energy Innovation has a grant program as well for solar panels. And so, the number I have in there, if we got funded, we would apply for the amount. And so, that dollar amount ties with the dollar amount for the solar on the bid that we got back. We could potentially apply for more solar. Right now, we're maxing out the lower roof, but if we could use that grant opportunity to double or increase the amount of solar on the project if we got funding through that opportunity. The other opportunity at the bottom, the Clean Energy Grant, is a new program that got approved in August. And so, the application and the funding details aren't yet available. I was working with Matt Dregney from Stafford and Rosenbaum to learn a little bit more than that, but right now, they don't have a lot available. But basically, that idea is that it would be a 30% rebate on solar for eligible entities, and that now includes municipalities that hadn't before, is my understanding. It also may fund geothermal, but there's a little less detail about that, so I didn't include any potential funding for that because I just don't know enough about it. But the rebate for solar is based on 30% of the, again, the bid amount for solar. So, those are, the bottom section totals just under 1.2 million in funding that we could get. Again, we might get zero of those dollars. And just to reiterate what's in the MOU, when you did approve additional funding for solar and geothermal, you were stating that the funding through Senator Baldwin's office, if we got that, that, of course, that would go to repay the borrowing for solar and geothermal. So, I want to just make sure everyone's clear on that piece. So, again, we're trying to continue to apply for grant funding and fundraising opportunities as they're available, but right now, some of the funding opportunities, we just don't know if those will come through. We could have a lot more funding in two months, or we could have zero extra dollars, and we just don't know. So, I'm just going to pass it on to Jeff, and he's going to talk about the bids that you see in your packet.
Yeah, I guess that's a good point. So, we got our bids back. You guys have this, have had this over the weekend here. What you don't have is the numbers of what we have to spend from our budget, which we talked about, that you approved at a couple of board meetings ago, but I'll get to that in a minute. So, relatively speaking, the three bids that we received are fairly close, and it looks like they're good bids from good companies, so we were happy to get what we have here. Going through the alternates that we have, you know, some of these were mechanisms where on bid day, we could select an alternate to reduce the bid by $30,000 or $40,000 and get things to be within our budget when we go to contract, so we wouldn't be at this meeting tonight. Unfortunately, the gap from our budget is large enough that none of those things are helping us at the moment. So, when we talk about where we're at, the only two alternates that we're selecting is the solar, because that is one that we committed to doing from requirements from you guys. And then, there's an alternate here, a deduct of $11,000 where we're changing some design and a ceiling. So, if we take the base bid amount, which is the apparent low bidder is Tri-North, if we take that $11,892 number, we add $150,000 to it for the solar alternate, and then we deduct $11,000 for the ceiling change, we get to $12,31,000. And our, the budget that we have available from the overall development budget that we had you guys approve was $10,817,891. Now, we also have, in our overall development budget, a $500,000 contingency number. So, we are applying, we're taking 200 of that $500,000, and we're basically putting it towards the bid right now, which would leave us with $300,000 left in contingency, which we're going to need on a project of this magnitude as we go through construction. So, the, what the gap is when we apply that contingency is just over a million dollars, at $1,13,000. Now, there was also quite a bit of desire from lots of different parties about being able to add masonry to the lower portion of the building instead of the second color siding that we had down there. If you take a look at those alternates, the alternate that we got for that work from Tri-North is very attractive. So, part of when we put together the numbers tonight, we can look at it with or without that $76,000 to change to brick on that lower portion of the building. So, with the brick, the deficit or the gap that we have between our budget and where we would be with this adjusted bid would be $1,089,000. And then, as Jennifer just talked about, we have the $10,000 in donations received since the budget was approved, and then the investment money from Ellers. So, that gets us down to either $968,000 or $892,000, depending on which way we're looking at that. So, you know, with that, we've got a couple of different paths here. Well, the first, I guess something that Jenny reminded me of, the bids are due for 30 days. So, we need to kind of figure out what we're doing quickly if we want to capture what we have from the bid. It's odd circumstances that you guys don't have a meeting on Election Day, so the next village board meeting is out past that 30-day period. So, we're kind of looking at two scenarios, is what can we do quickly and immediately that helps us move forward and kind of keep everything together and get the project started somewhat on schedule? Or the other scenario would be, do we delay the project? Do we redesign? Do we wait? Do we rebid it in the spring? So, we'll get to where we talk about each of those two possible future scenarios, but before we do that, are there questions about the bids or the budget? I think it's just helpful to kind of get through all of those numbers and start talking about what's roughly a million-dollar gap.
Questions, or anybody? Jeff, I'll just say, I mean, and I talked to Jenny over the weekend. I liked the idea of that we put the, I hate, I know it's more money, but that we put the brick back in. And I know we did some, we did some things before the, but I think that one of the consistent comments was about the outside.
Right. And from the planning commission as well.
Yeah, and that's a great bid, I think.
Right. And we did do some legwork on changing materials and working with material suppliers, and so that's, you know, that worked out. It's one of the few things that worked out here, but yeah, and that's why we want to kind of consider that, because we're getting a discounted value there.
And then, Jeff, can you, if we rebid, we have no idea what's going, what the prices are going to be, right? I mean, nobody's got a crystal ball. They could be higher.
Let me go through it, and we'll call it a scenario, okay? So, one scenario is, is we find a funding source quickly, so that we can keep the bids that we have. We can start talking to Tri-North, and we can start moving down the tracks. So, scenario number one is we find a commitment for funding that covers the gap. The other scenario is, it really doesn't do us any good to just wait and think that we're going to rebid the project in April, or March or April. There is going to be cost escalation at the end of the year. I know for a fact that there's subs and suppliers that are talking about, you know, another 10% increase in light fixtures, and such and such is going up, you know, whatever those dollar amounts are. So, we know that there's going to be a bunch of year-end things that are going to be happening here. So, just waiting and doing nothing and trying again later, that isn't going to work. We're going to have the same gap, plus we're going to have additional gap from whatever happens between now and then that we're at risk with costs going up. So, the second scenario is not that. The second scenario is, let's say that we do what we've already done a couple of times, where we keep kind of chasing our tail here. Let's say we say, well, let's just cut the size of the project, and let's figure out a way to reduce the cost by a million dollars, so that we can get rid of that gap. Well, there's other costs that are involved in, you know, between now and March, if that's when we rebid the project, or we're done with the redesign. We've got to pay for the redesign. We've got to pay for estimating again. We've got to pay for some of my services, depending on how long that process takes. But the biggest number that we're exposed to is what's the cost escalation between now and then? So, if we say the project right now is $12 million, let's say it's an $11 million project, what's going to happen between now and April on $11 million? Well, 5% is $550,000, 10% is a million one. Do we know what it is? I don't know, but I can't, there's no indication right now that it's going to be less than a half a million dollars, especially with a lot of known cost increases that are coming at the end of the year. So, we're getting to where to be able to go back, cut the project, redesign the project to have the project come down a million dollars when we rebid it, we really need to cut out between a million eight or a million two, more than that. So, we need to go take our design that we have right now, and we need to reduce it by a million eight, or 2,002, or whatever those numbers are, right, in that range? And that's value that we're taking out of the project. So, to save a million, we're losing a couple million in value through that exchange. Now, that means we, you know, we don't have to find any additional funding commitment, but it's just, it's a shame we're at that point that we will lose that much value if that's the scenario that we go down. So, you know, all things considered, we really want to kind of come up with what's the plan to get some funding commitment sooner than later, and try to capture this now sometime in the next 30 days, so we can go to contract. Because waiting, it just seems like we can, we continue to get less, less library for the money. So, that's what we're here to discuss tonight.
Okay. So, before we get to anybody else, I just want to, I've communicated with both Jenny and Jennifer, and I have to applaud, I mean, it's not easy, ask, go out and ask for more money, but I applaud the willingness to at least, at least try. We're in this situation, and you guys are willing, willing to sort of see what we can do, see what we can raise. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, and we've already identified through the library board some different levels of things, some things, some opportunities with the new library that we are going to be publicizing and fundraising based off of anyways. So, clearly, we want to keep fundraising. We want to encourage people to donate to the library, to try to make this happen. We actually had Camden stop by. They actually had another lemonade stand for us last week, and that's part of the money that was coming. So, the community really is behind us, and we think there's some opportunities. We just can't say what it'll be.
Right. And then, the other thing, because, you know, the commitment for the funding is kind of, we need a backstop so that we can move forward. But what we can do when we move forward, as Jenny just talked about, we can fundraise, we can continue to fundraise, we're going to continue to fundraise. And then, when we can get with our contractor, I'm just chomping at the bit to sit down with them and figure out other cost-saving measures that we can go through, and, you know, figure out how to bring that budget down. So, those are things that can happen once we're moving forward, but we can't, we can't start that until we get to go. So, that, you know, that's why we've got this, the urgency to know that we have a mechanism for moving forward, and then we can get to work and start trying to find the dollars to pay that back.
Others, and then I want to turn over to Martin when we're done here. Any comments?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I'm very ignorant about the contracts and how the money all works, and it's my understanding we've borrowed some of the money for the library already, and we're going to borrow more next year for the project. So, when we're entering into this contract, we're not paying all this money upfront. We have some time to come up with the back end, that last million dollars or whatever, next year, right? We could, we could figure out that part later. I just want to understand, you're looking for some sort of commitment from us that we will find a way to come up and close that gap, that we're guaranteeing it for the purposes of signing this contract?
So, it's a little tricky. So, basically, we have a total project budget, and we have pretty good sense what the other costs will be besides this. So, we don't think it's responsible to commit to a contract or a project when we know we're short funds, and we don't have adequate funds to, you know, have furniture or do some of the other things that are necessary. So, we know it's necessary. While this bid is within our total project budget, it's not within the line item for general construction. And so, we don't want to move forward until we know that we have all the funds necessary to do the whole project, or something that would make sure we can pay those bills and be able to deliver a complete project. And so...
So, not necessarily funds in hand, but promised funds even, just knowing that there's dedicated funds for it.
Correct. We'll be paying this out over time between now and next December if we move forward. And so, you know, there's kind of a regular pace to when those funds become due to the contractor.
All right. Anybody else on the board otherwise? Mark? Oh, Matt?
I just want to mention, you know, that there's so many timing issues here that are challenging. I'll just give you one example that, you know, we've talked to Jennifer about, and it's the tax credits. It's a brand-new opportunity through the Inflation Reduction Act, 30% direct credit back to municipalities for energy efficiency elements of projects or clean energy components. We know that, we're very confident the solar, and frankly, we're confident that the geothermal should qualify, but we don't have the regs out yet. The government, the federal government is still putting the specific details together to tell us exactly how this is supposed to work. So, we're not sure, for example, whether to say, like, you need to structure the contract in a certain way, so we have a good paper trail, so we can demonstrate what the cost of the geothermal is clearly, to make sure that, and the, I've been told it's like a $600,000 element of the project, the geothermal. So, 30% of that's $180,000. But we don't know for sure exactly how to, how to make sure that you're eligible for that, so Jennifer has not included that yet.
Yeah, that was in the summary of possible funding at the, that we talked about earlier. So, again, we just estimated the solar, you know, at the 30% that Matt just alluded to, because we have that spelled out in the bid as a separate line item. But again, the geothermal, we don't know how they'll request that verification, so that was not, we didn't put a dollar cost there. Like Matt said, we don't know what the regulations or the guidelines will be on that, unfortunately.
But one of the things we would do is say to your team, if there's any way to structure the contract, to make it clear and easy to identify the dollar cost of geothermal work, do it, because we think there's a reasonable opportunity there to capture $180,000.
All right, Mike?
My perspective is, is I think we need to find a way to fund this and find a way to recoup our costs and hopefully do fundraising or something to make it reasonably fiscally responsible on our part to go forward. But I don't think the solution would be re-engineering a library to make one that's already smaller than we wanted, even smaller, because we would be building something that we don't need, and we're going to regret it. So, I'm very curious as to what Martin has to say.
All right, we create some suspense.
And on that point, Mike, you know, to reduce, just so people have a feel for it, from what we have designed right now today, to reduce the library enough to come up with that $1.8 million or $2 million, or whatever we need to do to assure that we're going to be under budget in the spring, that's like 6,000 square feet, which is 19% of our current design would have to come out to be able to, you know, so we, it just gets to the point where we can't keep up with it.
All right, Martin, you're on.
So, I think kind of what everybody's talking about is sort of like a failsafe. If we move forward, what do we, what do we have for funding if these, if this $1.1 million that the library is estimating that might come in over the next couple of months happens, that's perfect, that's ideal, and we've closed our gap. But if that doesn't happen, we've already approved a contract at that point, and we need to figure out how we're going to close that gap. So, you know, I think there's a couple of options. We could obviously borrow the money next spring, an additional whatever gap up to a million dollars or a little more. We know what our debt service looks like going over the next few years, so adding a million dollars is, you know, just going to make it that much worse. But potentially, we could trade off with a project. Next year, one of the bigger projects in our capital plan is the second phase of J.C. Park, which includes the fourth baseball field, the playground equipment, and the second multipurpose playing field that we have in there for 2.5 million in borrowing next spring. We could decide to do a little bit smaller of a project for Phase 2 in J.C. Park and create a Phase 3 for a future year. That way, we could take a million or more from that project, and that way, we wouldn't have an overall change in our impact to what we've seen for our debt service over the last couple of meetings.
So, I'll go first. I'm not interested in borrowing more money. I'll just say that. Martin did share with me his idea. I'm open to that, taking some of the J.C. Park kind of, and hopefully, we gets, you know, nothing's guaranteed on the Baldwin money or whatever, but I'm much more, because we've committed to borrowing that already, I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable with borrowing more money on top of what we already have borrowed. But I could entertain the, kind of the swapping, taking some of the J.C., just to sort of keep this, this project going. And maybe we'll find more savings as we sort of move along, and maybe it won't be a million dollars, but that's, that's, that's kind of where I'm comfortable. I'm just not, I don't want us to borrow any more money on top of what we have, but what do others think? Yeah, Carleen?
Well, first of all, I agree with Mike that I think it's a really bad idea to come back on the library and rebid it in the spring. We should not, we already cut back, shouldn't cut back any further. I also have some misgivings about borrowing more money, and I think that this option is an attractive one, especially if the, you know, the funding doesn't come through from the Baldwin grant. And I'm just going to say it again, I said it last time we met, this state has a $6 billion surplus, and funds to municipal governments and to public schools have not risen for the last 10 years. 20. This is intentionally starving small communities and cities, so that people get taxed by those entities and not by the state. And it sucks, because this is not the way to service the population of our state. There should be plenty there in the state aids to be able to do this project.
All right. Who else? Yeah, Phil?
Thanks, everyone, for the information. Like Randy, I'm opposed to just adding a million dollars to our debt without taking advantage of Martin's idea and taking it from another project. I, you know, I think at this point, reducing the size of the library doesn't make a lot of sense for a number of reasons, particularly that the cost of reduction, square footage is just not good math, really. But I'm certainly going, willing to make the trade with the J.C. Park in order to get this project up and running. But I'm certainly going, willing to make the trade with the J.C. Park in order to get this project up and running.
Okay. Yeah, Jenna?
I just had some questions in regards to moving the J.C. Park project back. Would we move it back just a year? Is that, did I understand that correctly, or what is the?
I guess it depends. I mean, it would be up to all of you to decide where you wanna schedule that. If, if we could do, if we took a million dollars from that project, we'd still have something around 1.5 million that we were planning on borrowing next year anyways. So we could still do part of the project next year, maybe finish the fourth diamond and do the playground equipment.
Or the lighting.
Or the lighting, yep. And then we could come back a year, a couple of years later, whenever it makes sense in our capital plan, our debt management plan, and finish off the rest of it.
And so then, the follow-up question for me for that is, would we include that discussion in our future budget meetings? Or how would you see us, how would you see us laying out that discussion?
I think we would, yeah, probably. I mean, we can talk about it as soon as the board wants to. But we would most likely look at our capital plan holistically again next June when we go through that process, so we can see where all the projects are laid out and we can see what the impact of potential debt service is. So we can slot projects where we want to so that we kinda keep that debt service flat.
Thank you.
So, so Martin, just to follow up on Jenna's question, I mean, if we, if, if we did get the Baldwin money and the other stuff, we could, we could easily just put that back in to J.C. Park, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we might, we could be potentially in a situation by the end of December where we got the million dollars from the federal government, and that would be a great scenario. We'd be back to where we are today.
Okay. Derek and then Mike?
Yeah, I have a hard time swallowing the, the price difference on this as well. I agree that I'm not necessarily in favor of kicking it down the road any further, and I also don't wanna see a reduction in size 'cause it's already smaller than what we want. However, I do, I don't really care for the, the idea of taking the J.C. Park funds, and I'd like to, within the capital plan, look at really any other way because there's a lot of sports groups and kids that use those fields, where I'd like to keep that project moving forward. So if there's any other capital projects that can be moved around, I think we need to kinda look at, at what those possibilities might be as well.
Okay, Mike? Mike and then Phil?
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, um, do we need to redo the MOU if we do this?
Yeah, we would. We have to amend it.
But we could go forward and, and do that later. Okay.
Okay, Phil?
And Martin, perhaps you could help me out with this. But to Derek's point, we would make a commitment tonight to the library board to provide the extra million dollars. The discussion about what we would do with J.C. Park would happen at another, at another time. And I'm not really sure we could, could we incorporate where we're taking the money from tonight? Does that make sense? I think it makes more sense to have that discussion later and say, and when would that, did you say June?
Well, so, there's a couple of things. So we could, or could move forward with the contract tonight, commit to the additional money so that it's kind of the failsafe, that when we go to borrow the rest of the money in March, April, that, that's gonna happen, 'cause it will have to happen if, if we need that money.
Right.
And if we, you know, get to the, find out that we do need to use it, you know, we can have those discussions about where we wanna move that around immediately. I mean, we could, in January, we might know, oh, we didn't get the federal money. We know we're gonna have to borrow more. Let's take a look at our CIP. Is the J.C. Park project the right project to pull from? I, I offered that one up because there just isn't a high enough dollar amount project in the 2023 CIP to generate a million dollars for us for this, for the library project. There's a couple of street projects, but we've gotten grants for some of those projects, and we're kinda moving forward already. And the rest is just, you know, smaller-ticket equipment items. So in order to generate, you know, that much money, that's kind of the project that we'd have to take a look at in order to keep our debt service where we've seen it the last few meetings, on that, kinda that trajectory that we've seen. So if we borrow more money than what we had planned or change up some things in some different years, you know, we should really take a look at what that looks like from, you know, our debt analysis and are we gonna be increasing more than we'd like to and that sort of thing?
So, uh, go ahead, Mike, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I guess where I go in with that was, we have a decision tonight about borrowing the extra money, whether or not we wanna reduce another project, a discussion for later. And even if we were to incorporate that into our motion tonight, a future board can change that. So it's really, to Derek's point, just to keep it nice and clean, I think, you know, the motion should be just about.
Yeah, really, it's just, there's gotta be a commitment at this level that if we're moving forward with approval of the contract, you may need to borrow that million dollars.
Yes.
Coming April. And there's potentially some options to kind of keep things balanced.
Right.
But some projects might get delayed. But hopefully, ideally, maybe some good things will happen, and that will never come to pass.
Yeah, Mike?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Personally, I wanna make it clear, I'm 100% in favor of funding the library and 100% opposed to increasing what we're borrowing next year. I realize kids and things are using that park, and there are, there are soccer fields and things in place in the part of the park that's in for Phase Two. And if it gets delayed, kids will still be able to use that portion of the park next summer. So that's kinda my view on it.
And I, I think, Mike, I mean, it, it may not necessarily all come from J.C. Park. Maybe we'll, we'll look, as Martin says, we'll look around, we'll look and see. Maybe it won't come from there. Maybe it'll, there's some other projects or part of it. And the fundraising, and hopefully, hopefully, it's all evens out for us. But, yeah, Jenna?
So I guess that's why I asked about when we could talk about the J.C. Park, 'cause I think, you know, it does seem pretty imperative that we make a decision on the library tonight, but I think we should be taking our time to discuss, you know, whether we chunk up J.C. Park into two projects. You know, hopefully, by the time we start having those discussions, we'll know a little bit more about the grant situation. And so I, I like Phil, your suggestion of, you know, kinda focusing on the library and making sure we're taking our time to, to really think through how we're gonna come up with that, that extra money in a responsible way.
Okay. Yeah.
Just from a budget perspective, though, we need to finish budget at our November meeting, correct?
We can always make budget amendments. So we'll, we'll do our best guess and delay of the land right now, and if things change, we'll come back and change it.
All right, so it looks like.
Andy?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Jeff?
Just one, one comment, just so everyone understands. I mean, let's just say we were to take a million dollars out of the J.C. Park Phase Two. The only way that could be put back in is we increase our borrowing. So I mean, it's not like, just 'cause we take it out of next year, eventually it has to go back in there at some time and place. What we are doing with J.C. Park, just Phase Two, is, at this time, I'm working with our architects to give me an estimate of the different components of Phase Two. That would be the ball field, the lighting, the playgrounds, the playing field, soccer field, and then a storage facility out there in the park. And I think what we can possibly do, and like what Martin was hitting at there, is, you know, we, we may be able to look at, okay, we are going to take this down to 2A and 2B. And 2A may be the last, the, the fields, and we're gonna leave the lighting and stuff to later, or we'll do the lighting now. And those are the type of things we'll definitely be looking at. But any decision on that would be premature tonight, I, I think, just from all the information I have.
I, I think we need to take care of the library tonight. Let's get that going. So if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain, we can do, we could do 7A, 1 and 2 in our packet. 1A is to approve the, an executed contract, or construction contract for the new municipal library. Okay, Amanda and I saw Jenna, too. Any other discussion on that? Yeah, Mike?
Does that include money for the brick veneer?
I would like it, too.
I would like it myself.
I think that's.
It's a really good bid, and I think it, I mean, consistently, we've heard about the outside. And I think, and we got a good price on it. Yeah, Derek?
I guess my question is, before we vote on this, should we go through some of those alternates that are on there? I mean, if we're doing the brick veneer, Jeff had also mentioned the $150,000 for the alternate 11, the deduct of the gravel and paving for the asphalt bike path is alternate number eight. I guess I still see as problematic, but I understand that that's probably.
So those are included. The only ones that are accepted on there is the alternates deduct to change the ceiling tile. So.
Gotcha.
The only alternates that are, to get to the price, is the alternates for the ceiling tile change, which is $11,000, 'cause most people besides Brett won't notice that the ceiling tile changed. And then we have to, we have to include the, the solar for the $150,000. The only reason that we included that as a breakout add was in case we, the numbers came back. A lot of the, some of the bidders were saying they have a hard time getting numbers and making things. So we wanted to make sure that if it, we felt we could get a better number, that we had that opportunity. But we think that's a good number. So we would use the $150,000, the base bid, and then the alternate to deduct the ceiling tiles, is what's included right now.
Okay, so the bike path is currently as part of the project.
Correct.
My next question would be the CCTV system that's also in there, but. Yes, that's in there. It's in. I think that's the question. Yeah, no, I mean, I understand that it's in, but I guess I, as far as the necessity of it, is that something? It's surveillance, it's surveillance cameras. No, I understand. Yeah, yeah. Is that something that the, that we're really thinking is crucial?
Yeah, we do have that now, and especially with moving to a two-level facility without adding maybe as much staffing as maybe would be desirable. That's really helpful in just monitoring different areas of the library. There's policies governing when that footage is disclosed and how it's used. We do have a system now in the current library, so we would want to maintain that if at all possible.
All right, we, we had a sidebar over here. Do you guys, do you guys need to tell us something?
I have something.
Well.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just looking at the MOU and then looking at the motion that you need to make tonight, and it looks like, is this a draft resolution that you have ready for tonight? I need to review the draft resolution that Martin has, and then that, I may not have anymore. So if you could give me a minute, I'll.
Okay. Yeah, Phil, go ahead, let's hear you.
Are we tying it at a dollar amount to this tonight and not to exceed or something like that?
That's what he's.
That's what he's, he's looking at, so.
Good thing we got our attorney.
Derek, are there other, you wanna look at other ones?
So just, just to be clear, we would be, we would be accepting alternate 1A for the masonry, alternate number six, which is changing the ceiling, which is a deduct, and alternate 11, which is the, the PV solar. And everything else stays as it, is it currently in the design?
All right, sounds like we need a calculator over here.
So I think we got.
Go ahead, Matt.
So there are two resolutions that Martin has available. I, I take it they're in the packet?
Yeah, they are.
So let's go, let's look at those one at a time. The first one is Resolution 22-36, authorizing the library board to award, approve, and execute a construction contract for new municipal library. And I think the focus for a discussion here is on the last paragraph, where I think we should talk about making just a couple of small changes to that paragraph. As drafted, it, it authorizes the library board to approve and execute a construction contract on condition of approval by the village attorney. So I, I guess you want me to look at the contract. But I think we should consider two adjustments to that language. One would be construction contract in an amount up to X, so that the new dollar amount, the kind of upper-level, not-to-exceed-dollar amount that you're talking about. I think that certainly needs to be done. What, what maybe you wanna do and maybe you don't wanna do is, do you want to specify any of the particular alternate bids that you want to direct, must be included? Or do you wanna simply give a dollar amount and then leave it to the library board ultimately to make the decision on which of those alternate bids should be included? So that's up to you. So I think those are the two things I think should be kind of tweaked in that resolution language.
Yeah, Jenna?
So then should we rescind our motion and start over?
Yeah, 'cause there is a motion.
Should be a mo, what's the motion pending?
To approve it, to approve Resolution 22.
Yeah, so that motion's pending. I, I think maybe the next thing to do then, leave that on the floor. A motion to amend.
Okay.
Would be in order, and maybe, maybe do it, let's do it twice to make it easier. The first would be the dollar amount. But you, but, but to get to the dollar amount, you're gonna have to know which of these bid alternates you wanna include.
And we know that.
So.
Yeah, what is that?
Yeah.
It's 1A, 6, and 11. The contract amount would be $12,107,000.
So there needs to be a motion to amend the resolution to include that number, to amend the resolution to include that number.
You said $12,107,000?
$12,107,000.
Yeah, you okay, Mike, with that?
Yeah, I put that motion in and also to include the alternates of 1A and 11 and whatever the other one was.
Six, six. 6 and 11.
And then who was second?
I will.
Or did, did we already have a second?
Did we have a second?
I didn't have a second.
Okay, Carleen? Okay.
Candy, do you have all those alternates?
I do. 1A, 6, and 11.
That's correct.
And the number.
And the number, $12,107,000.
Okay, yeah, we got a motion, a second. Phil, discussion?
$12,107,000, what number is that?
That's the contract, that's the total contract.
Total contract.
Okay, so right now, we're just okaying the contract.
Authorizing the library board to enter into a contract in that amount.
Okay.
With those bid alternates.
All right. I'm good with that.
Okay, we all good? I, I don't know, Derek, are you, your hand's not up or not up?
No.
Okay, all right. Just, just, I didn't wanna miss you. All right, so we got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. That's for.
Now you have to go to the main motion.
All right, which is Resolution Number 22-37. Oh, I thought we did.
As amended. All you did is amend it, now you're gonna adopt it.
Oh, all right, all right, all right. Resolution Number 22-36, authorizing library board to award, approve, and execute a construction contract for new municipal library. Carleen and Jenna?
No, we already have that.
Oh, what?
There's already a motion on the floor for it. You just have to vote on it.
All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So complicated.
And can I just clarify, Matt, you talked about the village attorney review. We have been working with Attorney Callen from Matt's office, and she has reviewed an AIA standard form of agreement, made some significant language changes that will be the starting as the form of the agreement for the contract. So we are working with Stafford and Rosenbaum on that, and we'll continue to do so and to try to get that information for that clean energy grant incorporated into the extent possible without having those regulations available.
All right, and we do need to do the second one, right?
Yes.
Yes, that, that dollar amount will have to change as well. So the gap is 1.1 million or almost 1.2 million?
What's the difference between the budgeted amount and the, and the amount that was just approved?
It's the $1,089,109, right?
That's before we apply the, after we, less after we apply the impact fees. Let me just get to that email, sorry. It would be.
Yeah. All right, Mike, your question?
Excuse me, I don't feel comfortable voting to authorize more general obligation bonds next year until we decide whether or not this is coming out of Phase Two for the J.C.'s and some of our other spending.
So this was something our bond council advised us to adopt now, when we're adopting the contract, so that there's a level of commitment that, that will actually happen. And so what you're committing here to do is to, as we just talked, it should be 4.6 million now. But most likely, as you guys discussed, there'll be a reduction in another project somewhere. So there's gonna be more borrowing for the library, but less borrowing somewhere else, presumably, if that's what you agree on.
Okay. So what's the, what is the amount?
It should be changed to 4.6 million.
Okay, instead of 3.6. 3.6, okay. Everybody clear on that? So it's 4.6 instead of. Everybody clear on that? So it's four point six instead of three point six?
So what you're going to do is kind of like what you just did, though, do like a motion to put it on the floor and then do an amendment to change it.
Okay, all right, let's get.
Could just be done as one motion.
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
All right, Phil, go ahead.
Move to, to adopt resolution twenty-two thirty-seven, putting the language in the agenda and on the document, except that alter, alternating will take up to three point six million and we'll change it to four point six million.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Matt?
Yeah. Okay, Mike's second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right.
The one reminding item of businesses to direct staff to come back with a revised memorandum of understanding to reflect the changes that have been made now to the, to the project.
No objection.
Yep. You, you want a motion?
No.
All right, please do it. All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I just, I can't express the gratitude of the library board and the community for all you guys have done. I'm so, we're so excited and so excited for the community and to be able to do this, so thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your time.
All right, so we're going, we're going to try to slip one more. We had to request to slip one more item in, and that is seven D, number one, operating license application for Seth. I think Seth is here, and I'm going to turn this over to Jenna.
All right, so before this is the, the committee, the public, public safety committee recommended the denial of the motion or the denial of the operator's license application for Seth. Safer, a little bit of background here in the memo from Candy, but we had two different meetings that we had addressed the particular topics, invited Seth to join us to talk more about the operator's license application. And upon that hearing from Seth at the time, we decided to proceed with a recommendation for denial of the application. So, and we have Seth here today. I don't know if you'd like to speak a little bit about what, you know, why you weren't, what, what happened, why you weren't able to make it to the meeting, but.
Yeah, I, I apologize for missing the meeting last time. I was, I was sick that day. I called off of work and it, I forgot about the meeting until later that night, and I emailed Candy immediately when I remembered about the meeting. So I just, I had forgot to give a notice that I wasn't going to be able to make it last time.
And so as you'll see in, in the packet, you have the original memo from Sergeant Niasse about the background for the application, and that was the information that we used to discuss whether to approve or deny the application. So tonight we have a couple of options. We can vote on the recommendation from the committee. We could potentially send it back to the committee to discuss further with Seth here, or we could discuss it now and potentially change, change the decision. Did I get that right, Candy? Yeah, so.
It's complicated tonight.
Last month going on.
So Jenna, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The idea of Seth not being there was not the basis for the denial. Am I, would I be right?
You would be correct. So we actually spent quite a bit of time discussing this, and I'm going to eventually turn it over to Matt. But when in this, in analyzing operators licenses, we look for information on the applicant's background that would be substantially related to the, the license, and the role that they would be playing, and I'll let Matt discuss what substantially related means. We spent a lot of hours discussing that, so it's not as straightforward as one might think.
Yeah, briefly, when there's a background investigation done, a report is provided, including information about conviction record. The committee, I don't recall the specific conviction history here, it maybe it was an OWI, I can't recall. The committee determined that there is a substantial relationship between that offense and the, and serving as a licensed bartender. What, what that license allows someone to do is to essentially be in charge of the, of, of serving alcohol. You can be a bartender without being a licensed bartender, but you can't be in charge unless you're a licensed bartender. One of the things that didn't happen at the committee, because the applicant wasn't there, is the law has now been changed to add yet an additional complication, which is that even after it's been determined that there is this substantial relationship between a conviction and this licensed activity, the applicant does have a right now to present evidence that they've been rehabilitated, and, and then that can also be considered. So the applicant wasn't at the meeting and didn't have that opportunity, so I suppose the board could say, let's do this now and hear from the applicant and see if he has information to present that's relevant to that issue, and then you can make the decision tonight. Or I suppose the board could say, you know what, we think that's better done at committee, and ask the applicant if he would be willing to meet with the committee to do, or would like an opportunity to do that. And so those are a couple of ways, ways to proceed. I would at least give him that opportunity before you make a decision to either tonight or at a committee meeting to give him that opportunity one more time. I think he's been given that opportunity, but wasn't able to make the meeting. So if you'd like to give him that opportunity again, I think it's probably a good idea. Whether the evidence is satisfactory is ultimately a decision for the village board with the structure we have now with, based on a committee recommendation. We are looking at kind of revising the process, but we're not done with that yet.
So I have a question. If, are you waiting on a, a job for this? Do you have an employer that wants to hire you and you're, they're just waiting for you to get this?
No, I'm currently an employee at headquarters, bar and grill.
Oh, okay, so you, this isn't a, a necessarily urgent request, it's a? Or?
Not, well, urgent in what way exactly?
Yeah, maybe.
I was just going to say, sorry, so you're currently an employee at headquarters, and without the license, kind of to Matt's point, you can be a bartender, but you cannot be in charge of bartenders, correct?
Yeah, it, it gives you the responsibility of closing a bar by yourself, basically. Because there always has to be someone in the building with a license at all times. So I can still close a bar as long as there's another person there who has their license. The, I guess, I guess the downfall of that is it's sometimes not necessary to have two people there all night long. So often, well, we'll have a first-cut bartender when it gets later in the night and the crowd dies down. The first-cut bartender will do some side tasks and then clock out and leave, and then there's a closing bartender who, who closes everything down and cleans up and all that stuff. And I've, my, my only, my only sched, I'm only scheduled Friday nights, Saturday nights, so I've just, I've just given my Fridays and Saturday nights away just to work in there to make extra money, and I've been closing the bar. I've been working at headquarters since May of last year, and so they trust me to do that.
And follow-up, sort of. Are you, if we decided to hear your story of whatever you want, whatever supplemental evidence you'd like to present to us tonight, are you comfortable doing that in this venue? Or would you prefer that we send it to a committee, which is still a public meeting, but maybe a little less public, not televised? I mean, are you comfortable doing that here today?
Yeah. Yeah, but I also understand you guys are kind of on a time crunch, so if you would like.
One of our presenters has to leave at six thirty.
Yeah.
And he wants to have, give enough time to present and ask questions and all that sort of stuff, so.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to refer this back to committee.
Yeah, and I'll second that, too. Yeah, let, let Seth present his case to the committee again.
Candy, can we put you in charge of connecting with Seth about that meeting date and then?
Sure, thank you.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
All right, Seth.
Thank you very much.
All right, so. All right.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, let's go back up to four A, because other folks have time commitments. Presentation by Carlson Detman regarding the employee compensation study. It's been, it's happened. All right, you're on.
It's a fun night, isn't it? And, and part of what we have to talk about tonight as well, as we wind down, is, is money. And we've been talking about this for some time, and this is what makes Martin's job interesting. Just trying to turn this on. There we go. So I'm going to try to go through this pretty quickly. There are some slides, in fact, I trimmed this down this afternoon in the interest of time. So some of these we've talked a little bit about at the front end, you know, we, we know that we got many challenges out there in the workforce that are presenting to us. I, I know I spoke specifically to this slide last time through, and quite honestly, I could speak to this for, for days on end in terms of what's going on. Just a couple things that are going on in the marketplace that, that we try to track because it kind of informs our decision-making, and I think it's important, given kind of the trajectory we see the economy going, is, you know, this graph, the blue line is simply the number, this is the national data, but blue line are employees quitting their jobs voluntarily. The red line is employees being laid off or discharged from work. This was a concern back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen with this graph, and you can see how it's just continued to separate from one another. The big deal for that is the more people who feel comfortable quitting their jobs, it puts greater pressure on, on the wage market, and employers having to offer up larger wages, so on and so forth. We've seen some trending where it's ever so slightly going down the last couple of months. It needs to come down quite a bit for the pressure to be taken off the labor market, and, and so that's the first layer that we're seeing. Second layer, I think this, this is, it's hard to read the actual numbers. I don't think you need to read the numbers, because I think the graph tells the story itself, which is the Consumer Price Index data from nineteen fourteen all the way to present day. I'm worried about present day, and, and primarily, and I, and I heard part of what I wanted to say tonight from somebody else speaking is that last time we saw numbers of this magnitude was in the nineteen eighties, early nineteen eighties. The tools that municipalities had, and I'm not taking any sort of political stamp, but the tools that municipalities had back in nineteen eighty was, well, maybe we need to tax to the level of the CPI to account for the increases. That's a political hot button I don't, I don't have to, have to worry about, but the point is, that tool is no longer in your tool bag. And so making these decisions, making decisions regarding libraries and all those other things that communities need to do, puts a lot of pressure on budgets, because asphalt, road salt, library, construction costs, you name it, increase. The problem is that this is the number that gets the media attention, and for the employees and for everybody else, that this is what wages or should wages be going up by eight percent. Now, the reality is, organizations tend to gravitate to the CPI when it's low. So when we're sitting at one point five, point seven five, or whatever those numbers are, it usually is a pretty acceptable number to set for wages. But when CPI is at high, it's really hard to, to, to follow that same logic, which makes it hard in the future to, to extend that logic. Because the other number that we track, I think is a more realistic measure of, of cost increases as it relates to wages, is the employment cost index, published every quarter, and you can see, you know, our concern isn't just that it's been increasing, because every number's been increasing. It's that the private sector has, the, the red line being the private sector, the blue line being public sector. The private sector's been eclipsing the public sector since the last major recession and has just gone off the rails the last probably year and a half to two years. And, and so what we're seeing, and, and it stands to reason, the private sector is much more able to respond to these sorts of changes more quickly, whether it is through price increases or making my Snickers bar smaller, you know, that's the one thing that frustrates me, probably is a good thing. But the point is that when we see in the public sector, you know, closer to three percent, you know, wage growth and closer to six percent in the private sector, that's what we see. But when you have any number of jobs that compete with the private sector for the same talent is where some of those challenges come in. So it's kind of the groundwork of the, the stage we're setting here. Our work that we do, and especially for this project, is exclusively on the compensation side of things. We spent a lot of time talking about the internal equity and the competitiveness and putting things together, but those other two pieces of the puzzle are equally important. Having a solid benefits offering for the employees, and I have no doubt that you do. But the third one, I think, sometimes gets overlooked, and that is the experience, the culture, the, the engagement of your workforce. Are you a good place to work? And the reason why that's so crucial is, I want to say it was two years ago, maybe it was even three years ago, Harvard Business Review had an article, and it holds true to what we say. And it was talking about how nine out of ten employees would take less than pay for a job with meaning and purpose. And it is parallel to what we see coming out of Gallup, who does a lot of research on employee engagement and employee culture, where organizations with a positive culture do better at retaining and attracting employees, and also reduces some of the pressure on wages. So all of these things contribute to that conversation. We're just focused on wages right now as, as we speak. And as we talk about kind of the work that's been done, there, there's really two halves of this pie. One half is yours, that we, we turn over a compensation program to a client and implementation, executing it and monitoring it as time goes on. And our half has been, in partnership with, with the village, that, you know, the discovery and analysis of the job. How are your jobs structured? How do they interrelate to one another? What does the marketplace look like? And then ultimately, in kind of the, the last few weeks have been more kind of on that strategy side of things. How does this help contribute to our ability to recruit and retain? That's going to be tough. I mean, even, even with the best compensation structure, it's still going, going to be tough in, in the marketplace that we, we exist in right now. And so we're on the tail end of this. I'm just going to breeze past this. This is just as we're sitting here talking about our recommendations and our findings. There's no action requested this evening. You know, that's part of, you know, I believe it's the intent, is part of the final budget process to incorporate this to the extent that you can. And, and so tonight's primarily the informational session to offload that information to you. So as I alluded to, every single job that we had as part of the study, we applied our point factor job evaluation system to it to make certain that we were at least getting that foundation laid before we had to maybe dig into some other jobs as related to market, as related to salary compression or other items like that. And there still might be some need to look at that on a follow-up basis, but really, we, we've got that done. And, and as we evaluate every job, the other question that we're asking is, can we find this job in the marketplace? And our, our standard is, you know, every once in a while we'll come across a job, and I think there was one or two here where it's kind of like this job and it's kind of like that job. And we, maybe we've created one job comprising of two different roles, just so we can have a full-time position. Easier to hire a full-time position than a part-time in most cases. And so from, from our standpoint, we are, we find it acceptable to blend two. If it gets beyond two, it's not worth the time to have it as a benchmark. But again, what we're looking for is consistency. Do we find that job over and over again in the marketplace, either in the public or private sector? And again, I think I had talked to this before, but I think it, it bears repeating that there are any number of reasons. So as we look at your current pay practices, or even as you go forward, why people, people in the same job might have different pay. It could be the education. I would hope not, I would hope you'd have a standard set of education for a job, but that can be a contributing factor. Experience overall, experience with the village, the job evaluation score, the performance of the employee, you name it. But the things that are most importantly not considered in this are what I would consider to be the big no-no's, race, age, or sex. Those are, those are matters that have been decided time and time again in legislative action or court action, and are not considered as part of our observations or review. And as we talked about the market previously, you know, that, that question, and it's a challenge because you operate in a very dynamic and very competitive marketplace that is very hungry for employees. And so as we look at that, you know, part of the question is, you know, who's like you? It, it's a very solid foundation to begin that conversation of, let's get some similarly sized communities, maybe proximate, maybe a little bit further out, but maybe not too far out, but also considering those organizations with whom you're competing. You know, City of Madison is certainly one consideration that, you know, for certain roles, a direct apples-to-apples comparison is, is absolutely, you know, appropriate. You know, I would say probably the bottom third of a pay structure, you know, the more of the hourly type jobs, that those jobs are very common to one another, and, and we should have those comparisons to make certain that we're competing, as well as incorporating private sector data when appropriate, because not all jobs have private sector equivalents, to make certain that we're able to compete in that realm as, as well. And so as we look at it, we came up with what I believe to be a pretty robust, consistent with what we've talked about previously. And so as we look at it, we came up with what I believe to be a pretty robust, um, consistent with what we've talked about previously, including the private sector data sources. You know, Bureau of Labor Statistics is helpful. It's not our primary source, nor, nor should it ever be. But some of the larger survey sources, comp data, Willis Towers Watson, pay factors, really puts us in a position where we think we've got a solid foundation for making pay recommendations. We've gone through the data with a fine-tooth comb that somebody who's paying insanely low or insanely high is not incorporated as part of the overall analysis. So cleaning the data for statistical purposes, I guess is what the best description. So as we look at this, this is a graph that makes, has no purpose other than to set the foundation for the graphs to follow. And that is, here is our, the, the benchmark jobs we've established. So the, the red dots on the, the line there are the benchmark jobs. Our goal is to have a solid representation at the top, in the middle, and the bottom of the organization. So are we, you know, appropriately approximating the, the, the organization through the marketplace? And again, we have. And there are fewer dots at the top, and there should be. If you had too many dots at the top, you're probably a little top-heavy. And so again, we're, we, we would expect to see fewer dots in that upper third of the graph. But the, the metric we use to kind of help inform us, do we have a good model that we're building for you, is that R squared. I can go in the weeds on that as well, but, you know, realistically, that is, once we get above ninety, we've got a pretty decent foundation. And once we get above ninety-five, um, we're really getting greedy. And when I, when I say that, that there's not much more to be gained from it in terms of overall results, changing the final, you know, each grade by a penny or two or three. So again, we got a really good foundation for making some of these recommendations. So I talked about the model. I'll let you look at this in, on your own as, as, as you want, but really, a lot of things get baked into it. Our job evaluation scores, the, the market data, and how we use that market data and clean that market data, as well as the ongoing conversations with management that we've had to have in terms of, yeah, this isn't one of those jobs. You know, you thought you were looking at this right, you revisit that, and let's go back and, and, and retool. We've had to do that for a couple along the way. So in terms of competitiveness, um, I put this up here as kind of a, a statistics one-on-one. Um, I, I, I don't like doing this, but I think it helps anchor what it means when we say we're building a pay structure based on the median market, the fiftieth percentile. That means you are building a pay structure where half of the organizations to whom we're comparing are, are gonna pay more than you, and half are gonna pay less. Realistically speaking, the only ones that an employer ever hears about are those that are paying more. I say that tongue-in-cheek, but that's the reality of, of what goes on. But, but mathematically, you should have half of the organizations paying less than you as well. You're trying to situate yourself nice and comfortably in the middle of the marketplace for, for purposes of pay. And the other ones, so I would say in a step program that we're talking about here, the metrics we're trying to hit in the bottom of the pay plan and the top of the pay plan would be the twenty-fifth and seventy-fifth percentiles. If we were building an open-range, performance-based structure, it'd probably be the tenth to the ninetieth. So that's the only reason why I have this up here, but I, I think again, knowing kind of what the, the philosophy is behind the median market structure allows those other conversations to, to occur. So if I compare those two, again, um, I don't like this line. I've been doing this for nine years. I've never liked it. And so I, we've come up with another one on the next slide here to kind of explain what that means, is that you, you, this, at the fiftieth percentile, you are about seven percent behind the market. You should be behind the market. We are comparing two thousand twenty-two wages to our predicted two thousand twenty-three market pay. And so you should be, I would guess, somewhere between three and five percent behind the market, just based on that alone. So being seven percent behind sounds really terrible until you take those other facts into consideration that it's not that far off. It's far enough off where maybe some corrections needed, but not that far off. Put a pin in that conversation, because I want to revisit it, because I don't know if that's necessarily the answer long-term. So if I put this graphically, this is just basically saying that in this example, I've got job evaluation scores from three hundred and forty to eleven hundred seventy-eight. If I just put those in four different buckets, from three hundred forty to eleven seventy-eight, just put those in there. So in the first bucket, if you had, if you had forty benchmark jobs, ten of them would be in the first bucket, ten would be in the second. That's all we're doing here. And aside from the very bottom of the pay structure, everything else is kind of gradually increasing in terms of its, its, um, lagging of, of the market. And again, as you see it, you know, about seven point eight percent at the bottom and about seven point three at the, at the, at the top of the structure. Pretty, pretty uniform in my regard. Nothing that is terribly earth-shattering. I just delivered one last week. They were twenty-five percent behind the market. That's a harder hole to dig out of. In terms of what organizations typically do, World at Work, the, the Compensation Professionals Association, and we, we, we follow and, and, um, participate and belong to, is for the longest time, about ninety percent of organizations built their structures at the median market. Makes perfect sense. Kind of that Goldilocks approach. Then the last couple of years, and it makes perfect sense, pandemic hits, the recovery out of that, and the competition for talent coming out of that, organizations scratching their head, maybe we need to be a little bit more competitive to bring in the talent that we need. And so you can see just, and I'm focusing primarily on those top two lines, that there's been an increase in those going above the median marketplace. And I think that there's some good reasons behind that, that philosophy and that approach, at least on a temporary basis. I do believe in the next eighteen months to twenty-four months, we're gonna settle back. We're gonna see more and more organizations going back to median marketplace. I just think we're in some pretty crazy times right now. Think, I know. So when it comes to plan design, lots of considerations get baked into this. You know, how do employees move through that structure? If you have a beginning, beginning and an end, the question is, how do I go from one end to the other? And in, depending on the type of structure, you know, that can take on a different, um, view of the world here. We've already looked at the hierarchy. We think we've got that nailed down. We hope we do. We, um, compression concerns certainly weigh into it, you know, and that almost always exists in the law enforcement, fire world, every once in a while in the public works and in some other areas. I don't think we have any unique market pressures where you have a job where you just absolutely need to, you know, push the envelope. You know, I just had one this morning, hiring a nurse practitioner for, you know, a county and, and trying to, to figure out what those rates should be. You know, definitely a unique market pressure. Budget is always going to be an issue, um, the connection, if any, to performance. And again, I think that's one where perhaps, um, a conversation is, is worthy at some point. And then the other, you know, how does this contribute to the recruitment and retention strategy? There's not much new in the world. I mean, we can configure these sorts of things all day long, you know, in terms of variations, but you're either going to have a single rate of pay, here's this job, and we're gonna pay twenty-five bucks an hour, whether you've been here ten minutes or ten years. That's, you know, one way. Puts a ton of pressure on an organization to stay on top of the marketplace if you're gonna do it that way. The tried and true step models, um, have been around forever. Um, I think sometimes cause frustrations at the, the, the governing body level, only because they tend to be viewed as, as automatic increases. I'm not in love with them, but I also see a lot of challenges in putting performance-based pay into play, unless there's been some experience. But there's some other challenges associated with it. So we need to figure out what the best approach, and then that bottom one is just a combination of the two, where that, that, the agreement with, you know, quote-unquote agreement with the employees will move you to a market-based rate in a relatively short fashion. And then any other, other movement beyond that market-based rate is going to be based on your contribution to the organization. So, so, so certainly some solutions. We're gonna play from the step-based plan this evening. But again, you know, we, we know that, you know, everything is subject to review and discussion. That's part of the reason for tonight, is to see if we're, we're hitting those markers and, and going in the right direction. So I'm just gonna back up a few slides here in just a second, but in terms of how we construct this, really the only intent of this particular slide is to illustrate we're not pulling numbers out of thin air. So if I go back here to this slide, I had it in here, and I, of course, I removed it. I'm going back forever. Here we go. So if you recall, in this chart, we had the, the R squared. We also have the Y equals equation. Simply how aggressively is that line moving? You know, and if we were in a highly, if I was doing a project for a highly competitive industry, we might see that line be a little bit steeper or maybe even curved if we're dealing with, you know, CEOs and chief administrative officers or, you know, very highly paid, highly skilled positions. I'm not saying you don't have that here. I'm just, the point is that it can take a different bent. But using that, that slope equation, and then knowing that grade ten, I just, I always, I don't know why I always do, I always pick grade ten, that the middle value of that grade is four hundred ninety-six and a half points. So there's a range of points. I forget the exact range, but the middle value of that grade is four hundred ninety-six and a half. We just keep solving for X for every single one of those grades, and that's how those numbers pop out. From that graph that you saw previously to this chart, we're just, like I said, just simply solving for X to build a pay structure. The fun with this, it will come as you start navigating through your budget. Because again, as I'm hearing tonight, budget is an issue. And realistically speaking, for the foreseeable future, it's going to be an issue. Unless you are unlike any other municipality in the state of Wisconsin. Because i- it is an ongoing challenge in terms of, um, for years, you know, the, the priority has been, we need to fix this road, this thing. All of a sudden, we're in the, the mode where it's, the thing that needs fixing a lot of times are the comp structures, the means and methods of, of paying employees. And we want to do so, and we want to provide something that is competitive, and we want to roll it out in such a fashion that's fair. We would love, absolutely love it if everyone was happy. That, that would be a good day at work. We also know that that is very difficult to achieve. And so we focus a lot of our attention, can we give something and help the organization arrive at a strategy for implementation that is fair and equitable? You're not playing favorites. You're not engaging in discriminatory conduct, you name it. The challenge with implementing pay structures, especially step structures, but I would say generally speaking, um, pay structures, is one, the size of the increase. In a step plan, let's just say I'm paid twenty-five bucks an hour, and the step in the new structure that causes an increase in pay is twenty-five oh one. I think especially in today's world, telling an employee, well, twenty-five oh one's your new rate of pay, because that's the step in the structure provides an increase, twenty dollars and eighty cents increase going into the next year probably is not gonna be met with open arms. That's just a, a pretty educated guess. I think especially as employers are looking at in terms of what's happening in, in the, in the marketplace. But the size of the increase is certainly a factor. Um, the other one, which is more difficult to, to observe and, and to accommodate, is length of service. That an employee, you know, who's been with you for ten, fifteen years could conceivably find themselves at step two or three, or even one of the pay structure, just depending on how competitive that job was previously. And kind of where the rub occurs is not only that my years of service, I'll speak in the first person on this one, my years of service cannot be taken into account upon implementation, but I've been here ten years, this person's been here ten minutes, and now we're either at the same step in the new structure or, you know, very small distance between those. Those are the two challenges that we find every single time that we're implementing a pay structure. You're not dealing with anything that any, anyone else hasn't. But that's also why during the course of our, um, process, one of, one of the final things we turn over to the client is a costing spreadsheet that has your information, has our information also, and so different models can be built in terms of what if we did this, what if we did that? So you have options for days, but each one of those costs money. And so if I kind of look at that, and I, and I apologize, um, I can still read this. So I, I put out, the first two are the ones I just spoke about. Step provides an increase. Even at this level, it'd be about a five percent lift in overall payroll. This does not include any of the roll-ups. You can factor in another fifteen to twenty percent. So when I, when I say a roll-up, that if I give a dollar increase, I gotta pay seven point six five percent in FICA taxes, six point eight percent-ish in Wisconsin retirement, and then there's other things that roll up. Workers' compensation tends to roll up along with it, those sorts of things. So when I talk about that, that's another ten to fifteen, or ten to twenty percent on top of that. So we're talking about five percent lift in wages just to get into a new structure at the median market. Recognizing everybody's years of service, you can see how that number grows pretty significantly, and that's why it's usually off the table. Because people want to take it off the table because they have to. I'm not saying, again, it's your budget, it's your, your finances. I'm just saying that this is what most people end up realizing. And so those last two are just examples of the types of options that we could, we could do. That first one, step, step provides at least, a step three placement provide employees has at least five years of total employment. That's simply trying to create some separation. Kind of that wink and a nod, we can't recognize every year of service, you know, that five hundred twenty-nine thousand, but we'll try to recognize something. So we have some cushion at the bottom of the pay structure to bring new employees in at a, at a reasonable level where we're not creating automatic compression with, with existing employees. Again, you can, you could change it to five and six, you could change it to whatever. But, you know, just using this as an example, you can see how that increases from one hundred seventy-three to two hundred and ten thousand. The other one is the step provides at least a four percent increase. If people ask us, and people do ask us all the time, you know, what, what should we plan for a structural increase? How much of that wage structure increase from one year to the next, especially in twenty twenty-three? Our comment has been consistently for probably the last five, six months is, you need to plan for four percent. That's the only reason why I put four percent in there right now. That could be three. That could be two. Um, it could be five. We can go both directions here. So again, just looking at this, you know, providing, you know, so ensuring that an employee gets at least a four percent increase in the implementation is about a hundred thousand dollar lift off that lowest-cost option. So you have options. Um, my concern isn't the cost. It's a deep and, and serious concern of mine. But for me, I get to leave town. I mean, that, that's the reality of this. I don't say that to be a smart aleck, but the reality is that we know what the costs are, but in terms of how do you actually put something into action is, is really where, you know, we, we, we ask, um, I ask, it is the responsibility of, of the board. But talking about reality, and here's what we see happening around the state. Um, first of all, pretty much every piece of data or metric that we observe in our business is backwards-looking. CPI, what happened this last month in comparison to last year? Employment Cost Index, what happened the last quarter in comparison to last year? So that, just even those, those metrics in and of themselves are backwards-looking. But the data we collect, the public sector data, is pay plans that were almost always adopted last October, November, December as part of their budget deliberations. Now we're almost a full year ahead, and we know that organizations have made changes. We try to keep up with them, and I think we do a really good job of that. The private sector data legally has to be at least three months old, um, but usually is six to twelve months old before it shows up on our hands. And that's just to get past the Sherman Antitrust Act regulations. So when we look at this, we're, we're looking backwards. We've got some fantastic methodologies or tools to roll that data forward. And in any other year, that would be just fine. Buy a survey, and we could probably sit on that survey for two years before we have to buy it again. Not this year. This year, we're buying data annually just to kind of keep track of the market and keep pace with it. But the part that causes me the most concern is that we're sitting here talking, you know, us with all of our clients here, just with, with your own comparable pool, that there are so many organizations out there, not just, I wish it was all our firm. It's not, I mean, there, there's lots of other people that do this work and do it well, that, but many, many organizations are currently in process with their own compensation studies. And our fear, and I think it's a, a very real fear, is that the precise moment that you adopt, fast forward a month, that you have half of the organizations in your comparable pool updating their own structures, and you're behind again. And, and so we don't want that to happen. So we spent a lot of time this past summer, what are some alternatives to help clients temporarily put their foot on the gas, knowing that the goal still is to have a structure based on the median marketplace? Again, I firmly believe that that's where organizations should be long-term. So if I look at this, I put this graph back up here. You've seen two of these lines already. The black line, your current pay structure, the gray line being the market at the fiftieth percentile. The green line that I put up there, um, is the seventy-fifth percentile of the marketplace. And then the blue line is basically splitting the difference in an average of the fiftieth and seventy-fifth percentile marketplace. So first of all, people look at it and say, well, going to the seventy-fifth percentile isn't at twenty-five percent more on wages. No, it's only about twelve percent. And if you take it down to the fiftieth and seventy-fifth, it nudges it by about six, I'd say between four and six and a half percent, just based on the individual grades. This is where we have a lot of clients at least engaging in the conversation, is this a good stopgap measure that gets us in a position where we adopt, and the market comes back as these other organizations come online with their pay structure? And if, I'm, I'm most certain that if you were to reassess in a year, eighteen months, and measure the marketplace, you're gonna be a lot closer to that median than if you wouldn't take an action such as this. But it comes at a cost. And I just, that blurb just says what I just said. So just graphically, puts you a little bit further behind the market, and it should. That's exactly what this is doing, is temporarily that you're, you know, it increases the amount that you're behind the market. Um, from an implementation standpoint, though, again, it adds cost to it. And this is, I think, again, where, you know, Martin's sitting there with a full head of hair, if he can hair, if he, come December, if he still has a full head of hair, um, because you've got a lot of things going, you know, that you're trying to, to balance, you know, and, you know, whether it be capital or ongoing, it doesn't matter, it's still money that you're spending on behalf of the taxpayers. But if I look at this, you know, the step provides an increase under this model would be about two hundred fifty thousand. I'm just going to skip past the years of service one, if you don't mind. Um, and if you look at that step three, you know, you, probably to do it, and to do it the way I think everyone would want, it's gonna, would probably be about a three hundred thousand dollar price tag. Those are tough numbers to come by, I get that. And so one of the things that, you know, we've started to have some conversations, really haven't dug in too deeply, is maybe there's an approach that can be found where it is a multi-year implementation, where maybe you t- take a little bit, a bite of the apple this year and a little bite of the apple next year. That might be necessary. You know, my only concern with that, and I think would be a concern that would be shared by you, is does that help you from a recruitment and retention standpoint? Not all things are answered with, with money. You know, more is not always the answer. In this case, some more, i- I think is. That, and so trying to find that, that balancing act between tho- those, those different worlds or those different, you know, um, difficult decisions that you're having to, to wrestle with. Because for us, we want to make certain that it meets their strategic requirements. You know, and we've talked about equity and, and competitiveness, you know, quite a bit. Is it affordable, understandable? Because I think that's where, you know, the understandable part, we, we can talk about these all day long and answer as many questions as we want, but if it's not affordable, and it's not sustainable, that's really kind of where, you know, the, the problems will creep back in. So I think I say the same things here. I don't, in fact, I don't even need to speak to that, I just said what I wanted to say with that one. So it's a lot of information to digest. We've been going back and forth on some of these options. I guess what I would leave it, since this, there is no official action requested tonight, happy to answer any questions you have. I'm also happy, you know, if, if they occur after the fact, you know, look at this, um, and get your questions to Martin, I can also, you know, respond to those questions at that time as well.
All right. Yeah, Jenna.
Will we be receiving a copy of this presentation?
Yep. Yes.
Okay.
I just got done trimming it down for size this afternoon, so. So the presentation, you'll, and, and feel free to send a full, big one if you want, it'll be much longer when I show up here on the screen tonight.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, um, how are we doing? Very quiet, are you, everybody okay? We're hour and a half in. Everybody okay? Keep going.
No, I just said thank you.
Yeah. All right, we're okay? All right, so Jeff asked me if we could move up another item.
Yeah, just for.
Set, seven, so seven E one, which is the extraterritorial certified survey map for land division off Lathers Road, submitted by Phil Peterson. So Phil, you're on. Or you can come up and maybe, maybe Elise'll.
Yeah, I, I guess, uh, Jeff, you've got the, you've got the info there, uh, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, I guess.
Yeah, so, so this came to the planning commissioner, right? So Elise, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll just do a quick review, this is our standard extraterritorial jurisdiction, um, review. So Lathers Road is off CC, this is, um, kind of across from the Highlands of Featherwood neighborhood and backs up here to Vermont Golf Course. So right now Phil has his home off this cul-de-sac, and there's another home off of this, um, the cul-de-sac. He's looking to make a couple land divisions to add some more valuable lots back here. Um, I don't believe this has been to the town planning commission yet, you, you kind of, um, since you're so, so well-versed in the process, you kind of jumped the gun a little bit. So usually we're the last ones to see this, the town board, um, and planning commission.
Well, I was there on an information basis, but tomorrow night they'll pass one way or the other.
Yeah, so, um, we, as staff, don't have any issues with this, it shouldn't impact , uh, future growth in this side of the village. So once this goes through the town processes and the county, we'll be the last ones to sign it, but, um, we typically don't take any action, we, we aren't opposed to this split, so just need a head nod from the board that you are in agreement, and then we'll just wait for our attorneys to sign the BSM.
All right, so we need a, a motion to approve as presented. Amanda?
No motion.
Give me a second, somebody? Jenna, Kate? Any other discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Phil, you're done.
Thank you.
All right. Why don't we work backwards from? It's all messed up today. So let's, uh, let's go back up to, um, number three, let's do the approval of the minutes for October third, let's get that out of the way. I'll take a motion in a second, somebody? Derek and Amanda?
Are you going both, or, or there's September twenty-eighth and October thirty?
Oh, it's not added on my, my, uh, agenda.
Well, it's on our.
All right, I'm, no, I'm just saying, it's, I didn't see the, can we take both? All right. So is that okay with the?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I guess I printed it off too early. All right. Uh, any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. And then we're on, uh, four B, I guess, down to four B, presentation by Vanderwall regarding two forty-nine, two sixty-seven. Well, I just asked it, you, you weren't here, you said no.
It'd be good because we need to get her.
All right, let's take, let's take a five minute. The Village Board of Oregon to order for Monday, October seventeenth. Candy, could we have, roll please?
Beshin?
Here.
Dilo?
Here.
Glish?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Van Hampton?
Yeah.
In one.
Here.
Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. So we are going to change up the agenda a little bit, we're going to move up seven A, one and two, which is the library. Somebody has to go to another meeting, so if we could have the library folks come on up.
And, and summarizing existing site information as part one, and then as part two, to gather feedback from the public on potential reuse opportunities. Uh, the deliverable then is combining those two parts into a summary report, and then, um, providing that report and summarizing it here tonight. Ultimately, this is to help the village in, uh, making any future decisions, and, and again, just as a reminder, the purpose of this was not to, um, deliver a specific site plan, to evaluate any specific proposal, or to provide specific recommendations for development. It was to provide this information on, um, public input, and then to, um, work with the village and, and inform on, on helping to make future next steps.
And, and let me just add to this, just, we all know this, but presentation and discussion only, we decided no action tonight.
Thank you. Uh, project schedule, we started this back in the summer, with the first formal activity being in July, we held a property open house, um, with site people visiting out at the site, and then a public workshop held here in this room. Um, in the month of August, a community survey was, um, provided, and then through the month of September, those results were summarized, resulting in the presentation that you're hearing tonight. Again, for context, for people in the public, um, this is the site here, I've referenced it as an Idaho-shaped parcel, um, at North Main, it's actually a combination of three, three separate tax parcels, um, kind of orienting you there, um, with Main Street on the, on the east side, Johnson Street on the north, um, and Market Street, a, a parcel depth to the west. Three, three parcels in total, um, just under three acres. Um, it is worth pointing out, it's a little bit different in terms of configuration than the, than your normal rectangular parcel. Um, the street access is relatively limited, three hundred and sixty feet total, with just two hundred and thirty feet of that being on the main street, a hundred and thirty-three feet of street frontage back on Johnson Street. It's uniquely situated within a residential block, um, so, uh, private properties, backyards face up to it. Um, but it is nearby the school campus, to the downtown, and to, uh, community destinations. The existing zoning on the site is two-family residential, and then the future land use is designated as institutional within the village's comprehensive plan. The site is served by Village Utilities, it is also within a tax increment fin- financing district. Um, some notes on environmental conditions, there are several mature trees of various conditions on the site. Um, no specific environmental conditions that would encumber the future use, specifically, um, you know, contamination or conditions like that that have been identified. And then it is also relatively unique in terms of topography and the elevation, so kind of comes back from Main Street, um, reaches a, kind of a high point that does have some undulations in it itself, um, where some of the older trees are situated, and then it, uh, again, drops down gradually into a flatter condition towards Johnson Street as you move north. Again, just a note on existing conditions, as part of the due diligence, the financial piece. Um, so in total, the village currently owes just under eight hundred thousand on the acquisition of the properties. That make up the site with that final debt payment in twenty forty-two. Um, that is the current balance. The second down, um, bullet point there references the total cost of acquisition, uh, with inclusions for the cash down payment, and then interest and borrowing costs over the life of that, um, with a total of one point two million for the acquisition of the site. Brief history of the site, um, mo- most of you are aware of this, I won't go to it and, uh, through it in detail. Um, a lot of history with it being, um, occupied as the Methodist Church, uh, back in the eighteen-sixties, with the village purchase occurring in two thousand sixteen. Um, we're at the end here with the site reuse analysis. This graphic was provided, um, as part of the site visit and workshop materials, kind of providing some of that context for the public. This just identifies, the white lines are contour lines, kind of showing you how that topography lays out on the site. The blue arrows are, are drainage arrows, kind of showing how the stormwater moves about the site today, with some of the older trees specifically identified, as well as the red arrows off of the public streets being potential access points into the site. Drone footage was taken, um, so this is an aerial looking, um, kind of north-northwest. Uh, you can again see that L-shaped parcel as it comes from Main Street, um, and then kind of tees and goes back to the north towards Johnson. Drone video was also provided, so I will just, um, go ahead and push play on this, it's just sixty seconds, again, make sure the, uh, people in the public and, and have an orientation here to what we're looking at. Kind of coming from North Main Street into the site, panning over some of those older trees. And again, part of this context, with the public input opportunities that were provided, a site tour occurred just before the village workshop as an opportunity for people to get out there, experience the site, walk it firsthand, have an understanding of these existing conditions, and then provide their feedback accordingly. Okay, so, the next pieces of this presentation, first we'll summarize the workshop results, and then we will summarize the survey results. So, the workshop itself is a smaller sample size, but we did have good attendance there. 50 individuals filled this room for that event. It consisted of different pieces for the workshop itself, a large group polling exercise throughout the room, individual worksheets to answer questions, and then going through those worksheets as small groups, writing those up on the flip charts for the room to hear, and then a small group mapping exercise. In terms of the people that attended, 27% of the people identified that they lived in the neighborhood surrounding this property. 67% identified that they live elsewhere within the village. And then, the demographics in terms of age, 65% were 50 years or older, so a smaller percentage being of the younger cohort, and then a large number of participants have been longer-term residents of the village. All right, so we'll start to get into some numbers here from the workshop feedback. Again, this is of those 50 individuals that attended. A little bit of an explanation that the differences between these 2 bullet points. One is top priorities to be addressed, and the second one is top preferred reuse opportunities. So, really what that first bullet point was getting at is regardless of any future reuse that happens, what are the priorities of the existing condition that people would like to see addressed in some way? So, the top that were selected included the 2 listed there on the screen. Preservation of open and green space and conservation of mature trees was, of course, important to people, and as well as matching the existing neighborhood context and makeup. So, a little bit of explanation on how the second bullet point numbers work as well. Again, this was looking at potential future reuse, not necessarily just development, but what could the site look like in the future? You'll notice these numbers do not equal 100. And so, what people were selecting here was providing their response in terms of a level of agreement on 10 different scenarios. So, each scenario was an individual reuse opportunity. We'll take the first one, for example, of new, participants were asked to say, "Do you strongly agree with this statement or strongly disagree for the future reuse to be a new passive recreational amenity?" So, people voting on that scenario, those that responded to that question, 47% strongly agreed with that as being the future reuse opportunity. So, it's not a comparison or a vote up against the other options, it was just a statement of agreement on that. So, almost 50%, almost a majority there. There was also strong, strong levels of support identified for the next 2 listed on the site. These were the 3 that had the highest level of agreement on that scale. So, the second one was a mix of residential formats and then a mix of other development types, which could include residential. That was the questionnaire piece of the workshop. The second piece that we did was the small group mapping exercise, little snippet kind of showing you what some of those looked like. Participants were provided with sticky dots, red to identify issues, blue to identify opportunities, green to identify areas that should be preserved, markers to provide additional comments, key site assets, summarizing all of those maps that we received. People identified large mature trees, proximity to downtown, open space, and it being a redevelopment opportunity. Key site issues identified were stormwater management, topography, and then its context within that residential neighborhood. Key site opportunities for the future, people referenced incorporation of a mix of uses in the redevelopment, potential for it to be a downtown destination, some pedestrian improvements could be noted, such as installation of a rapid flashing beacon, crosswalk to the elementary school. Some development could front along the Main Street, street frontage, and then also an opportunity to incorporate park space into the future reuse. So, now we're going to move into the survey summary portion of the public input. The survey questions did mirror those that we asked in the workshop. It was open for about a month through August, and these were paper mailed copies to people's addresses. So, 1,500 surveys were mailed from randomly selected addresses using a utility database provided by the village. There were also 31 pre-identified properties surrounding the study area that were mailed a hard copy survey on a different piece of colored piece of paper, just to identify, still anonymously, who responded, but that they lived within the exact neighborhood of this property. In total, 433 surveys were returned to Village Hall, and that's about a 28% response rate, that's a good number. And then, there were an additional 28 people who sent emails to village staff to provide their input outside of the survey and workshop opportunities that were provided. Again, just giving you a snapshot of the demographics for those that responded, 90% identified that they live within the Village of Oregon. 36 people indicated that they live directly around the site, so on that last slide, we said 33 specific surveys were mailed. People had their own definitions of living in close proximity to the neighborhood, so 5 additional people said that they did live close by. 40% longer-term residents of the village, again, a little bit more reflective of a slightly older age cohort. Similar summary here, again, that first point to be addressed with future reuse was really getting out of the existing conditions that exist today, what do you really want to see considered regardless of what happens? Strong consideration for conservation of open space and mature trees, a good number there, identifying recouping the village's investment in the property, and then also people identifying importance for matching the neighborhood context regardless of the reuse that happens. The second bullet point was structured just slightly differently than the workshop. So, this was a ranking question, and participants were asked, you know, of these items presented, please rank them in order from 1 to 8, with number 1 being the most important. So, what you're seeing here on the slide are the top 3. So, saving mature trees had the most number 1 rankings, or the, you know, lowest total score for being higher up on people's priority scores, using like 1, 2, or 3 as their identified ranking. In the second place there is preservation of open space, and then finally resolving existing stormwater issues. I do have the full list written down if anyone is curious in how the rest of those ranked out. And then, into this issue again, where we looked at those 10 different scenarios and statements of agreement. So, on the top slide there, top bullet point, we have the prioritized reuse type. So, when presented with the scenario of, "Would you like to see this as a combination of passive and active recreational amenities?", 50% selected "agree" or "strongly agree." There was also a good number of people who selected, 35% agree strongly or agree for passive recreation, and then you can see how the next 2 rank their high numbers as well for both a combination of recreational amenities and new development, and then finally just under that, a mix of development. The flip side of these, on these scenarios, when presented with the question, "Do you strongly agree or disagree with the future reuse being standalone apartments?", this was a very strong agreement statement, that it was, that they would disagree or strongly disagree with the future reuse being only apartments. Same as for multiplexes, and then same for only standalone two-family or townhomes. So, those were the strongest points of least preference. So, this question is, kind of came later in the survey and was presented as, okay, now that you've kind of understood the context of the site, you've been presented these different ideas for different scenarios, all those things considered, what is your summary sort of overall vision for the site? There were 415 total responses on this out of the 433 surveys received, and 30% of those identified their overall vision to be passive recreational amenity. There were 23% that selected something other than that, and 15% that selected it to be specifically a new mixed-use development. Just a note there on the 23% selecting "other", those were write-in responses, so underneath that, you can see how those 95 individual responses were broken down. A little less than half of the 23%, or less than half of the 95 individual write-ins, identified it as a combination of passive and active recreation. So, it's slightly different than those 30% in the first bullet point that selected only passive. These individuals selected a combination of passive and active. Again, then moving into the 36%, a good number of them selected both a combination of recreation and new development. You can kind of see the other notes there on the slide. Again, with the survey, we had the 1,500 mailed individual paper copies. Within that was the specific different color papers that were sent to the adjacent neighborhood. So, this slide summarizes those responses. It's a much smaller sample size, 31 individual surveys being sent out. The same trends were identified in their responses, prioritizing the same priorities as the randomly selected larger sample size, and then also a strong desire for natural preservation and park space balanced with some redevelopment if it were modest in scale. This slide summarizes those additional 28 email comments that were received outside of the other public input opportunities, and these are actually attached in full in the appendix. So, these bullet points here are just a summary. A majority would like to see the village sell the property for redevelopment and use the proceeds for funding other projects, and some did indicate that they would like to see the site be used entirely for a new recreational amenity. Within these email comments, there was specific reference to conversations around the Sculpture Garden, and many of them identified that they think there's a better location for this use, and that they don't believe that it will have the same level of impact as other investments that have been discussed in this input opportunity. Some of the suggested reuses that were parsed out from those emails included commercial development, assisted living, senior housing, daycare services, and unique dining experiences. So, again, this is a small, small number of people that voluntarily wrote in email responses, 28 people, but we wanted to make sure that everything is just copied directly in here so that you have full consideration of all of the information that was gathered. Overall takeaways, kind of summarizing the 50 individual responses from the workshop, the 433 people we heard from in the survey, and the additional email responses, the conclusion is there's no consensus, and, you know, that might not be surprising. But what we did see is kind of affirming a good interest, a strong interest from some people in seeing all or a majority of the site preserved as parkland, and depending on how you parse out those questions, those statements of agreement, the overall vision statement, it's, you know, hard to say it's quite at 50/50, but it's really not a strong consensus on either end of the spectrum, whether it should be totally preserved as parkland or totally redeveloped into something, some other type of development use. So, again, in the bullet points here, strong interest in a majority of the site preserved as parkland, a lot of people identifying that the site is an opportunity to further contribute to the character of Main Street. There was strong disagreement with the site being used only as a standalone two-family or multifamily development, and then regardless of what happens, many people identifying a strong desire to preserve existing trees, respect the residential character in the neighborhood, and to be environmentally responsive. So, that last bullet point applies even if some type of development were to happen in the future. Those are considerations that people would really like to see taken into account. So, that is the end of the summary results. Within the packet, there was also a report that includes that due diligence and summarizes these things, and then an appendix that breaks down all of the tables in numerics and things for how these responses came in, and those, the appendix with the detailed comments.
All right, you ready for questions or comments? Who wants to start? Mike?
Yeah, thank you for a very clear and concise report. I had one concern about it, and it kind of threw me when I saw that 88% of the written responses, the emails that you had gotten, were opposed to the having a park there that wanted development. And it surprised me only because that wasn't my experience looking through the emails that I got as a village board member, so I, I kind of parsed a couple of those emails that I could track back to timeframes, and when I got them, and the earliest one that I saw came in on, to my email on July 21st, and the last one that I saw, and I didn't look at every one, but the last one I saw was in September 14th. So, I went and I counted all my emails in that timeframe, and in that timeframe, 63% of the people that I received emails from as a village board member were in favor of leaving it as green space. So, I don't think it's either here or there in terms of the board's ideas and consideration for this. I mean, we have our facts and numbers, we've all seen these emails, but just from a historical perspective, because someone's going to be looking at this 10 years from now or 20 years from now of what did the village feel, I really think I would like to see the emails that the village board got as well incorporated into this report, just so that we're giving a good idea of what people were thinking in the community. This is a historical document.
All right.
Can I add something to that?
Yep, Karleen.
I also did a tally. I had, I received 80 emails total, and 2 phone calls, and it, mine were 60, 40 in the emails, and then the phone calls were one of each. So, there's a lot more correspondence that came in through email than those 28, and I agree with Mike that we should probably reflect that.
Just to clarify, the emails and a couple voicemails that were included in this report were just ones that were forwarded to me, so if I'm not included, if I wasn't included on email and it wasn't forwarded to me, you know, please go ahead and do so, we can make sure that it gets updated.
They have to do that.
All right, anybody else?
You're going to get a lot of emails. And just, I got like 100, I mean...
Maybe just one of us should take responsibility for, and see if the lease is not on it, and then forward them.
Well, yeah, how do we coordinate that? I'm just, I don't, I don't want you to get bombarded with like 500 emails.
I guess if there's one of you that wants to go through your folder and to send me everything, cross...
I can check them all in April.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah, I can cross-reference, make sure that they're not ones that...
Yeah, why don't you?
I'll do that.
Somebody already has. Okay, thanks, Karleen.
All right, anybody else? All right, it's on you. Thank you.
And I'll make sure that you're not already on them and that all of us are.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we're on to 4C, public comment. This is part of the agenda, allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Each individual has a maximum of 3 minutes per speaker, so you want to come up? You got your hand raised? Come on up. Tell us your name and your address, please. And we're going to time it, so, okay?
Good thing I made it short, huh?
Yeah? Thank you.
Okay, my name is Sally Marshall Hendrick, and my address is 124 Rosewood Avenue, Apartment 203 in Oregon. So, I am here to speak in favor of the Sculpture Garden and the Nature Park in Oregon. I permanently moved back to the Oregon area in March, and prior to that, I had lived here 25 years ago for an extended period of time, of course. The biggest change that I've seen, of course, has been the population of Oregon has grown significantly, and that's a good thing, I think, because it proves that it's a healthy community. And that's a good thing, I think, because it proves that it's a healthy community and things are moving forward. When I came back, I was quite excited because I was, I was looking for a project. And to see that this project in the works, to create this Sculpture Garden Nature Park in Oregon, and those two words, garden and nature, really tweaked an interest in me because as a master gardener for about 14 years, that's of considerable interest to me. Working with nature, gardening, and things of that sort. So I'm basically going to go over some reasons why I think that it's important to support this project. And of course, these are my, this is my opinion, this is my vision for the, the garden which coincided with the Sculpture Garden itself, you know, similar type of priorities there. Beautiful, number one, a beautification of the community. I, I think that the park on Main Street would be significantly draw people to it, you know? It would, it would just scream, "Come walk into our park and, and view all the beautiful gardens and artwork." So that's number one. Education, for me, to provide that within the Sculpture Garden would be very important as a master gardener. And I don't know if you know this about master gardeners, but Wisconsin Master Gardeners is a branch of UW Extension. So we are a university, you know, department, basically. And education is extremely important. What I would like to see in the gardens, well, I, I know that native gardens, native plants are gonna be installed in the gardens. And if we could label those, that would be real educational as people walk through. Also, I would like to maybe have a demonstration or a workshop, teaching people who are interested in vegetable gardening, let's say, doing the square foot gardening, you know, how to plant beans, how to put in tomato plants, and things of that sort.
Okay, Sally.
Yeah.
Can you, three minutes are up.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, go ahead and finish, finish.
Okay. So, the education part of things is very, very important. And like the saying goes, if you build it, they will come.
Okay. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Susan, three minutes.
Susan, Susan Shendevy, 1860 County Road MM. You know, we lost five people that were sitting here wanting to support the park, but with the agenda being moved around, they just could not wait. And that's a disappointment. I've been a part of the Oregon community for 40 years. I've been affiliated with many, many, many of the organizations in Oregon over those years. I was a founding member of the Oregon Historical Society, and also of the After School Club. And I was a director of the After School Club for seven years. I was one of the co-chairs on the committee to preserve the red brick school building. The school district was considering tearing it down, and it's so fortunate that they did not do that. I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce, a member of, I'm currently a member of the Oregon Rotary. I have frequented the Senior Center. I volunteer at the food pantry. I was in the Dirty Knees Gardening Club that disbanded when the pandemic hit. I'm a member of the UW Arboretum stewardship, stewardship team. And I am a master naturalist through UW Extension. It's a very similar program to the one Sally mentioned, except that it deals with native plants rather than hybrid plants. So I've been in the community for a long time. I've noticed a lot of changes, of course. When I moved to the community, there were no traffic lights in town, there was no fast food, the only pizza was Maria's. The Senior Center and the library shared a building that had been a grocery store. So there have been many changes over these years. And Oregon has really grown up. It's becoming a more mature town. And I think that this Oregon Sculpture Garden Park would be a very big benefit to this growing community. Now, there was a time, I can remember back, when it was not intimidating to go to board meetings. Participating in local government was a lot more natural back when Oregon was a smaller community. But, things have changed. We've increased the number of eateries in Oregon. Construction of new housing is everywhere. But Oregon, to a large extent, is a bedroom community. People work in Madison. They go to Madison for recreation and for shopping. I think the Oregon Sculpture Park offers something new to the community. It offers entertainment, relaxation, community involvement. We've got many, many groups volunteering already that want to be part of this project.
Susan, you've got a couple of seconds left.
Okay. And it will also, or, offer economic richness. Now, as a teacher, I decided, I'm gonna give you a little handout, I hope you don't mind, because I listed on there all of the businesses that have endorsed this park. So there's a lot of support for the park, and do you mind if I hand this out to you?
Yes.
Because I, I don't want to take the time really...
Are you finished? All right. Thank you.
I'll have to be finished.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Ray, are you up next? Okay.
Well, I was hoping to, I'll close up a little higher. I was hoping to do this brief summary of what Bess Melson Huddle had written here. Now, Bess is a university professor. She has a son. She's like super busy, very excited about the park, but it's hard for her to really take the time. So she sat here for an hour and a half, and then she said, "Ray, I really ought to go." So I'm just gonna read what she had, and hopefully that can count towards her time, and then I'll tell you mine. So, she goes, "I leave written to the board. I've written to the board in support of the Sculpture Park in August of 2022 and in December of 2021." And that's something I want to kind of go back on just right now, that this park effort has been going on an entire year. As people know, you know, we actually brought it to the park board around October-ish last year. We had the stuff all over the Oregon Observer in September. So it's not like a new effort. People have been writing, you know, the whole year, and organizing, and getting funding, and getting things in place. And as soon as the board does the right thing and makes that land available, we're gonna run. And we have things in place. But anyways, so, she says, "We are strongly committed to the Sculpture Park with the rest of the residents downtown. And many residents can benefit from the beauty of the park. Since JC Park has become a sports complex, and it ruined the trees and walking, it's important to have enjoyment here," meaning on 249 North Main, "of nature and the need for that kind of park. We can build an outdoor structure that people could rent, bring in money. And this kind of rental could help pay for the park upkeep. So thank you for your consideration." And she goes here, "P.S., I waited over an hour but ran out of time."
All right. Thank you.
So thank you.
All right, Ray, you got your three minutes?
Okay.
Okay.
So, my name is Ray Vogler. I live at 299 North Main Street in the neighborhood where this park is going to be built, hopefully. And the first thing I want to do is thank the board. I want to thank all of you on the village board for commissioning Van De Wall to do this survey. I think that was an exceptional decision, a very good decision, that we brought in an outside firm that is impartial to find out how people feel about this land. And I'm very, very heartened. When I started to look through those numbers, you know, I was kind of like, "Should I look or not?" Because I had no idea how they come out, right? And the numbers were great. The, the top two priorities were mature trees and open green space. And then, and that was the, the surveys that came back in. Number three after that was to promote working with the stormwater, which we've all said is something that we want to address, and the park will address that issue, by the way. Because it'll be very low impact. And we also will have, in our plan, trenches and different kinds of equipment in place to, to drain off the water. Should be a very simple process, is what our architects told us. So I'm very heartened by that. But I do want to get to a little bit of the hard part here. And the hard part is that the packet, when I went to pages 52 to 60, there were all these like negative letters. And you all talked about that just now. So, I guess my question is, I don't know how they got there, and I don't know how it was decided which ones were printed, and, you know, maybe in the future, we could have more of a formal process? Because to me, it seems that that does change the tone. And anyone out there in the public who's not at this meeting will just look at that packet and go, "Oh, people, people oppose the park." So what I want to do is give voice to the, the voiceless right now, the people who aren't here but who wrote letters. And, and the reason I know they wrote letters, I'll be honest with you, is I'm one of the organizers, along with others, of the, the friends of the Sculpture Garden Park. And people talk about this, right? And so people are like, "Yeah, I sent a letter," and they're very proud that they did it. Because a lot of people find it hard to participate. So let me just read off some of the names. Sarah Dewey, and these are all names of people that are not in the packet. None of their letters are in the packet. Sarah Dewey, Kieta Funk, Beth Whitmore, Carol Bloom, Cindy Helmer, Ann Kleckner, Ron Hanky, Joe and John Temptee, who were here earlier than they left, Bess Melson Huddle, who just wrote this, she had to leave, myself, Sue Renhak, Stephanie Powers, Dan Dick, the pastor at the People's United Methodist Church, Susan Shendevy, who you know, Linda and Jean Stageberg, Paul Nelder, who's a master naturalist in Madison, who organizes master naturalist classes all around, Evan Adams, Mary Sella, Jamie Jared, Joanne Kylie.
All right, Ray, your beep went off, so...
Okay, so let me just summarize.
Thank you.
So what I want to say is, in summary, there is support for the park. It's very evident in anything that's come back. People want green space. They want to preserve the land. The word "park" was never actually used in the survey, but it's very clear that what people want is the green space. And I think when it comes down to the whole money issue, because I know a lot of you are thinking of money, it's really about priorities. Do we just want to spend millions on fixing sports parks exclusively? I'm not against them at all. Or do we want to share the money to also bring to Oregon more nature parks? And, and have a different kind of park for people, and creative art parks as well? And, and that's not a knock on the sports park, it's, I think there's plenty to share here. So four million was allocated by you, another two and a half million by you, six and a half million for JC Park, and, and we're not really asking for that much. We really aren't. If the land was made available, or a portion of the land is made available, we will make it happen. We are in place to have grants once we know the land is available. It's very hard to write a grant if you don't have something tangible. But I can tell you, we have people on board, there's grants on board, we have committees to do this, that. We already have goods and services that have been promoted, bricks, you name it, we've got it. Seeds, all sorts of things.
Okay.
So we can make this happen. And I think it can be a great joint effort with the village board and with the village staff. And I think it's gonna be wonderful once it happens. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ray. Anybody else? Susan, you already talked.
You know what, I already talked, but you know what, I got so scared when you said my time was up, and look at Ray, that was so...
I, I hurried her up. Nope, nope. You had your three minutes, Susan, that's good. Anybody else in the audience want to speak? We want to be fair to everybody here. All right, your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Gillian Corey Lippert. Gillian Corey Lippert, 130 Ash Street in Oregon. Was I supposed to say how long I've been here?
You can tell us if you want.
A really long time. My husband's in charge of dates.
Okay.
But over 20 years, anyway. I am an artist. I am in support of the Sculpture Park. When I look at, as a taxpayer with no children, when I look at how much money we are spending on soccer fields and stuff like that, that I personally get no benefit out of. And when I look at what we could get a benefit to, for with the Sculpture Park, both as far as just the appreciation of it and the income it could come into the businesses in Oregon because of it, I just would really rather see us spending money on that. Frankly, with the whole library thing, I would be thrilled to see money come from those sports fields and go towards the library. I think that is absolutely the way to go. So I didn't have anything prepared when I came in, but I just wanted to say I'm another person who supports this park, rather than building endless apartments and residential housing, which, there's so many other locations that those things can go.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Candy has one. Ann Kleckner could not stay, so Candy, Candy's gonna read her comments.
I'm gonna start the timer just to make...
Yeah, but be fair, three minutes, you better talk fast.
All right. This is from Ann Kleckner, 5545 County Road A in Brooklyn, Wisconsin. I'm here to speak in favor of the Sculpture Garden Park. I feel that it is an opportunity that will never come again. I'm opposed to filling the Main Street portion of the property with housing as it will greatly alter the look and feel. And I believe that most of the people would prefer to live on a quieter street anyway. Although I live outside the village borders, I think of Oregon as my community. I work to help raise funds for the library, and I'm willing to donate to and fundraise for the Sculpture Park as well. I feel that the random sampling of citizens should carry the most weight in the board's decision about this property. I was disappointed to see all the negative letters, especially since my husband's email in favor of the park was not included. It made me question what else was not included. It would be interesting to see a number comparison of all the letters for and against.
All right. Candy, thanks for reading that. Okay? Anybody else? The worries will... Yeah?
I just wanted to clarify that with the email being included, it sounds like we, in the conversation we just had, it was, it was just the fact that the lease wasn't CC'd on those emails that we got as a board. And so I'd just like to say that I think that that's on us as a board for not double-checking to make sure that she was included on that. And had that happened, they probably would have been included in the packet. So, Carleen forwarding those...
I'm getting in the process.
Oh, in the process. And so I, I expect that we'll see those emails in a future packet when we discuss this topic, so.
Yeah, it's in the process.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. I get, I think we're ready to move on. We're on to, we're on to five. Number five.
Five.
Approval of the vouchers. I'll take a motion in a second, we'll get it on the floor. Mike has got his hand raised, and Amanda. All right, who's got questions? Mike is up first. Go ahead.
Lisa, number 6910, for the Public Service Commission. What was that?
That's for our rate case that we're doing.
Okay.
There's charges that come through periodically for the services that they're providing for us.
Okay. And one more that kind of hit my radar, $72.50, marijuana decriminalization. Have we passed a policy on that, or...
I've been working with the Public Safety Committee on that, so it's in development. I expect your board will be seeing something within the next couple of months, probably.
Oh, excellent.
All right, Phil's, Phil's up.
Page 65, item 2165, I think it just might be miscoded, unless Deckers Supply is selling John Deere lawnmowers now. I wonder if that's...
No, that was, I'm pretty sure that, can you pull that, Lisa? I'm pretty sure that was to...
That looks like the purchase price, right?
It was a purchase for a lawnmower.
Oh, so...
Yeah, that's for our swap-out that we do every five years of our John Deere 1545 mowers.
Yeah, it's for a new mower.
And Deckers Supply sells mowers?
Yeah, they sold it to us.
Oh.
I guess I didn't check their... I guess I didn't check their franchise.
I was wrong. I know them as a sign company, so I was just...
Well, under the remittance address, it says Deere and Company.
Oh.
So it must be a subsidiary of Deere and Company, Decker. It's branch of Decker.
Yeah, okay.
Two of yous in the past, so...
Just in the... that's it.
All right, anybody else? All right. Candy, I think we need a voice vote, please.
Right, Jacobson?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Dan Campan?
Yes.
Bilo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
And Fashion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're on to six. My favorite, favorite part of the agenda, the consent agenda. So we're looking at A, or six, A through I, to approve all at once. I love it. All right. Phil and Amanda, second. Okay, any discussion? I love it. You can take your ten at a time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to adjourn.
I know. We're getting there, Mike, we're getting there. All right. All right, we're down to, let's see, we're down to seven. B, if I'm correct, is the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission, the minutes. B one is the minutes, that was in our packet, for informational only. Seven C is Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. C one is Proposal for Services from Nehemiah Community Development Corporation. The recommendation is to approve, that was in our packet. So I'll take a motion in a second. Amanda's got her hand up. Mike? All right, any discussion on that? Yep, Mike?
Yeah. Are we voting on the base cost, or the cost with the community training discount? Which...
What are you talking about? You said the DEI.
Yeah.
So what we're talking about is the approving the DEI committee to contract with Nehemiah for the services that were in the proposal. The cost with community training discount is, that's, there are spaces up to fifty people for people to take the Black History for a New Day at no charge, and then beyond that... I thought you said there were no changes from the first one.
So I think my understanding of the proposal is that they're actually working on getting sponsors for this work.
Yeah, that...
And potentially some groups and some businesses and individuals within the community may actually help fund this project. And so the cost could be up to twenty-five thousand, but they're optimistic that they'll get some donations for this work through other avenues, and it could be down to fifteen thousand, potentially.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Phil?
The amount budgeted was twenty thousand, is that accurate?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Right, but this is the additional community part, that they're actually hopeful that they will be able to offer to us with, they're working with funders to put together a program and that we would, we could be part of a pilot on that down the road. This is not part of the initial staff training. Staff and board training.
So this is no charge currently? There's no money attached to this? At least now?
The community piece, right. There's no money attached to the community piece right now.
Is that the proposal, we have the community piece?
Okay, we're... yeah. Let's go back here. The cost for the training did not change from what they proposed initially till now. That's for twenty thousand dollars. This part that Phil asked about was the community piece. That is something that would be down the road. And as Martin said, that's what threw me off. It's like, oh, that's not the numbers we were looking at before. They are pursuing grants and funders to be able to develop this program, and they would hope that the village and the school district might be part of that at moving forward. So that community-wide training effort is not a piece of the staff and board and community members' training, at this point.
So...
So what are we approving?
What we're approving tonight, is that the twenty thousand dollar budget item?
Okay.
Right.
Okay. We're not approving anything else?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Amanda?
I just want to clarify, it's not, it's spelled out here in the description. It says it's access to the virtual class for OSD staff. That, is that inclusive of the board? Because I don't know that we're called staff, but are we included in that?
That's the add-on, that's not...
All of this is the add-on? I thought just this column was the add-on. I'm looking at that chart. Tell me what of that chart we're talking about.
We're talking about the first column here.
Yeah. This cost without a discount?
But that's twenty-five thousand. We're talking about twenty thousand.
Yeah. Because we're hoping that'll come down.
Because we have twenty-five, twenty in the budget.
We have twenty in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just want to, because my understanding is that our first priority was to train the board and staff.
Correct.
And then we move out and train other...
And part of what we talked about with them was how community would be incorporated and what that would look like, and that was all for down the road.
Okay. So we have twenty thousand dollars to start putting towards this?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And that's what we're approving?
Yeah.
Okay. Proposal for twenty thousand dollars. Okay.
Yeah.
So we did have a motion in a sec. Who did the motion?
I did, Peterson.
Okay. So we're all clear for twenty thousand?
Twenty thousand.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thanks, Carlene.
Yes, thank you, Carlene.
Yeah.
This chart is actually confusing me.
Yeah.
I was trying to work it out when I was looking at it.
Okay, we're on to eight. Unfinished business, items offered discussion, possible action. Eight A is development agreement with JAD Partnership LLC for the Bodie Howe Project. I love saying the Bodie Howe. Concord Drive, including tax agreement, municipal revenue obligation in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. Staff recommendation is to approve as presented. Who wants to... I know this has changed.
How do you want to proceed? Do you want to...
Jeff?
Jeff? All right.
I want me to talk about it?
Well, let me, there's a part of it that I wanted, that I thought you'd cover, which is...
The pond.
Yeah, so...
This is fifty thousand more than before, correct?
Well, there's a couple of things that, after the board authorized me to proceed, that at least were kind of new dimensions to this, from my perspective, or at least they, I understood them a little differently.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you can put up something to show us the site with the parcels?
What do we have in here? Do we have anything with this? Do we have a map?
I don't think we do.
I don't think we do. All right.
Well, I'll do it with words, then. So we have the headquarters site, that you're all familiar with, and adjacent to the headquarters site, there's another parcel of land, an outlot, that has a stormwater pond on it. And so at the earlier presentation to the board, there was, I think, as part of that presentation, a discussion of some work that would be done with respect to that stormwater pond. Subsequently, I learned that there's some history to that. And do you want me to give that, or do you want to give that?
Well, I'll give a little bit of the history. So this was all part of a single development that this pond, the pond that is directly north of the headquarters parking lot and the Bodie Howe Site parking lot there. That pond's a regional pond meant to handle stormwater from all of that development to the north. Basically, those two, three-story apartment buildings. And then if you're back on Elliott Lane, all those duplexes and townhouses and everything that goes along there. At the time that this was built, I think there were some, there were some things that maybe could have been built a little better and designed a little better. This pond has not functioned well. It backs up into the storm sewer system. It's hard to clean. Up until eight months ago, Jamie did not realize that it was even his pond. And the only reason it became his pond is there was a bankruptcy thing that happened with the developer, that somehow this piece of land got attached...
Yeah, the original owners never even got created. It was the Foxborough or somebody's...
There was no homeowners association ever granted. And through a series of events, which we're just making assumptions on logically of how it happened, this pond became under the ownership of Jamie. The difficulty is, I mean, in a perfect world, we'd say, okay, we have to go back and create the homeowners association. And that homeowners association should be responsible for that pond. Legally, that would be impossible.
I don't want to try it.
Right. It would be highly expensive. I mean, trying to get hundreds of people to agree unanimously to be part of the homeowners association and then take over the maintenance costs and everything for that are really not realistic. And it's also not really realistic to have one individual landowner or business owner be responsible for that as well. So we look at this, I don't know if you remember, about two years ago, we fixed a previous problem with this development by contributing almost eighty thousand dollars towards a pipeline to solve the problems that were coming off the golf course. Remember that? We called that the Foxborough Pipeline. This is kind of phase two of fixing that, which is getting this pond kind of built better, allowing it to operate at a lower elevation, which will allow it not to surcharge the storm sewers and just allow it to be able to be maintained. Right now, I don't think anyone even realizes there's a pond back there, because it is literally a jungle. And it's a jungle because no one's been maintaining it. So that's the backstory.
So Jeff, I'll just say, when this whole thing first came up, I went out there to take a look, and I have to be honest, I was appalled by the pond. It was just full of all kinds of junk and...
It's not a...
Didn't seem like it was moving, and... But it was not the most prettiest pond I've ever seen.
No, no, not at all. And it's, so I mean, we look at this as kind of a chance for us to, you know, early on with this, I told Jamie, I said, you know, I would support bringing to the village the idea of the village taking over ownership of this parcel if the pond and outlot were brought up to the standards that we need to. Kind of like what we do with the development, when we ask them to make sure it's all built accordingly. And so that's what Jamie's been working with. This, the additional, unfortunately, the additional costs that came with this were actually quite a bit higher.
I mean, I can give a little bit of history on this. So you had looked at it, and we had talked with the engineer, and the engineer gave, I mean, an estimate. I mean, obviously, they're looking at it as a whole, and they're going, this is what we think is going to happen. And then talking with Ellers and Keith, he said, I would like to split, because remember, I had brought two different versions of a TIF agreement, where there's just the Bodie Howe, and then there's this other outlot. And they were like, well, what we'd really like to see is, just let's separate them, do your project, and then we'll... The project creates, what, five-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand? And we were asking for one-eighty-five, so there's like, oh, there's three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of extra increment. We'll just add this fifty in, because that's what we assume it's going to be, you know, to fix this pond, to bring it back up. And then I was going to write off to you and give it back to the village and say, fine, now it's your pond again. It's kind of how it should have been done originally. Brought up to where it's supposed to be, give it back to the village to take care of. So that was the plan. Well, once Ellers and the board kind of had a plan of how we were going to move forward on our August fifteenth, we ordered the engineering. And so I've already paid for that. And the engineer came back and said, our original supposition that eight inches of drop on the outflow is going to be enough, it dropped to fifteen, to actually get it to stop backfilling. So that meant that now there's not enough volume. So now there's not enough volume in the pond if you drop it fifteen inches to actually be considered detention pond. So now the whole pond has to be drained. They have to dig it all back out, and they have to regrade the whole thing. That's your extra money.
And add a safety shelf.
Yep.
I mean, so those are important safety features that are with a pond. It's usually a shallow area that borders the pond all the way around. So if somebody falls in, they're not immediately into three to four, five feet of water.
Jamie, could I just, so, on the, help me remember then, the two-eighty-five, was that like a hundred of that goes to the pond then, and the rest?
Well, everything that this, the only difference to this, it has, it's like, nothing is, our project hasn't changed at all, literally, every difference is the pond. So it's now a hundred and, it's like just about a hundred thousand dollars to completely drain it, regrade it, drop it, and then clear the area around it.
All right. So of the two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, a hundred thousand is essentially needed to... I view this as kind of a legacy problem that we're trying to correct with the stormwater pond, both in terms of its functionality and from a legal standpoint, conveyance of ownership of this outlot to the village. So we have an opportunity here, and Jamie's willing to, in this agreement, agree to do the work, convey the outlot to the village. The village is agreeing, and he's also agreeing to do his project, build the Bodie Howe Project. And the village is agreeing that, you know, if he does all of those things, the village will issue a municipal revenue obligation to him in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. And so really, what, we're getting two things with the TIF money. One is the addressing these legacy issues on the outlot. And then the other is the new development, the Bodie Howe Project. So that's, that's what the agreement really provides for, at this point. And yes, the cost went up for the reasons that were described.
And things were changed as far as the ninety-ten?
That's what I was going to mention, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Martin on that.
So the original agreement had an eighty-twenty split of the increment. Jamie was going to get eighty percent, and the village would get twenty. So now it would be actually a hundred percent of the increment that the project generates would be returned to Jamie because of the increased cost to the stormwater project. But I think the reality is, is if we wanted to do this project later, we would probably be doing it at greater cost.
Wait, yeah, absolutely.
So this is a chance for us to kind of knock out two birds with one stone, as Matt kind of mentioned.
Yep.
Okay. Questions? Anybody? Mike's got one, and Phil's got one?
And Jamie carries the debt, not the village, on it.
So what's, so what's the risk to the village of returning a hundred percent of our taxes to them? We don't pay past the closure of the TID, correct?
So really, what we're saying in the agreement is, a hundred percent of the increment generated by his project would be allocated each year to make the payment on that municipal revenue obligation. If the money's not there, he doesn't get paid. And we still don't pay past the termination of the TIS district. So there's no financial risk, if I understand your question, to allocating a hundred percent. There was the hope, I guess, when we first discussed this, there was the thought that, oh, this project's going to generate more than enough money to cover both the project that Jamie's doing and still leave some additional increment available that the village can use to pay for other things. Well, we don't have that opportunity now. We don't have twenty percent of that increment that we can use to pay for other things. But we're getting a significant problem solved that's not really Jamie's project. It's, I mean, the stormwater problem is a regional neighborhood problem.
So I see that our interest rate on this went up from six to six and a half percent, which kind of goes with the territory that we're in right now. Assuming things don't stay this way, in a couple of years from now, interest rates go back to something more reasonable, is there any way to renegotiate this and come up with payments less for the village?
It's not set up for renegotiation, but it is something that the village could choose to pay off early. So for example, if, let me think, how this would work. So if the village decided, look, we can actually borrow money at a lot cheaper than six percent. So we're going to prepay the MRO, which we're paying six and a half percent, and reduce our expense that way. That would be an option. But we don't have the agreement set up right now in a way that would, um, allow the village to go back to Jamie and say, we wanna renegotiate the interest rate. I don't know if you wanna speak your financing in terms of that interest rate and what your, whether that's locked in or what your?
Yeah, it is, uh, it is for me. And honestly, uh, if you can, I'd thank Steve Pieter honestly, cause, uh, I went to multiple banks and he was the only one that was willing to drop it to that amount for this amount of time. Other banks were wanting seven or more, cause we'd already seen a basis point increase of seventy-five points between when it was approved and when it didn't. And they were just like, we're not going any lower, cause it's too long of a time period and the market is too unsure. But OCB was interested in being involved in the project, so they said, we'll take it even at that lower. I mean, right now prime's sixty-five, so they're a quarter of a point above that.
Okay. Thank you. Phil?
So it looks like it's about a hundred thousand dollars to do the stormwater. And what if they get halfway through and it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Then what do we do?
Well, that one I, because we ordered the, so when I got the, uh, engineering back from JT and, uh, and actually saw what they needed to do, we sent that to Hamburg and Hamburg is actually doing the site work for us. And so the bid that we have to cover the pond has already actually been, I mean, they've had guys onsite. The contingencies that they built in there were, we shouldn't see them. I mean, it was like, if we hit a giant rock or something like, I mean, like it was stuff like where that they weren't expecting. But they pretty much have it set to go. I mean, at that price.
It really becomes a Jamie project.
Yeah, then it's gonna come back from.
We're not, we're not involved until, until he says, okay, I'm done with it. I ready, turn it over to the village and we would have, his engineers would give us a record or an as-built drawing for it. We would compare it against the design. And then we would, our engineers would, and then come to, and write a recommendation and well, that would say, we recommend you accept this.
Yeah, just to, maybe just beating a dead horse, but, um, uh, so the village doesn't make the funds available until after the project's been completed and accepted in the way Jeff's describing. If we, the worst case scenario is Jamie runs into some unanticipated problem and his contractor tells him, holy cow, we ran into this big problem and it's gonna cost a bunch of extra money to deal with it. At that point, I expect Jamie would come back and tell us he's got a problem, but then, but the village is under no obligation to fund it. At that point, either he has to complete it to get his municipal revenue obligation, or he can abandon the project and say, I'm, I'm done spending money on this. Or you can choose to work something else out.
I would move to approve as presented.
Okay, give me a second. I'll give it to Jenna this time. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I would just note that about twenty years ago, when they were running some water or sewer underneath Quick Trip, they ran into a giant rock.
That was really what they wrote on my thing. Like, giant rock may cause extra costs.
Different, different Quick Trip. That was, that was a different, that was Main Street Quick Trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, whole different, yeah.
Alright, thank you Jamie. We're good?
A little history for you.
Dark history.
Alright, we're on to eight, eight B, Agreement Between the Village of Oregon Police Department and Local Four Twenty-One. The Wisconsin Professional Police Association Law Enforcement Employee Relations Division for January one, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Staff recommendation is to approve. Who, who, Martin, did you say anything?
Yeah, I could say a couple of things.
Okay.
Negotiations went well. Uh, we had two different sessions that we did in July and September. There's really only a couple of things that are noteworthy to mention. Um, this is for four calendar years between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-six. Probably the biggest thing of this is the modification of the wage structure. So, uh, adjusting it to be more competitive, especially in the early years of an officer's employment. Overall, uh, the individual officers are gonna get, be getting variable adjustments based upon the change to the wage structure. But the total amount of salary for, uh, that we're budgeting is about eight percent higher. So some will see a little bit lower than that and some will obviously be kind of in that eight percent range depending on where that wage structure adjusts itself. Um, and so then we also have, uh, wages mapped out for the remainder years there. Another one, another thing to note is the addition of Martin Luther King Junior Day and Juneteenth as holidays. But only if the rest of the non-union employees get those holidays. So if that's a decision that we make for non-union, then it will also happen for the police officers. We made some adjustments to some of the holiday payout and then just generally cleaning up some minor material stuff and expired language and some other grammatical stuff. So, that's pretty much it.
Okay. So myself, Jenna, Lisa, Martin, Chief Ben Goff, of course, our, our other attorney, Kyle. Were part of the team, part of the negotiating team. So, we'll entertain a motion. Jenna and Carlene, any discussion? Yeah, Jenna?
I just wanted to say that, um, I'm really glad that we got this agreement done and I, you know, thankful for the work of, uh, RP, the chief, Martin and Kyle for, um, helping bring this, this agreement forward. And I think it shows good, good partnership and our commitment to having good public safety servants, um, moving forward. So, really excited for it.
Okay, anybody else? Alright, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. HC is Village President nominations for the Ad Hoc Public Art Committee. You see the names there? We had, uh, good application. We had twelve applications for this. And so we got a good, I think a good group. I ha, I am nominating myself as part of the, the village board. So, we'll take a motion in a second. Yeah, you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I was looking, um, at the, the choices, uh, for which, uh, you know, that's one of the things you get to do as president. So, I, I don't wanna step on any toes here, but I did wanna point out that, um, uh, John Bano and Patrick Melzon, two people who are excellent board members, uh, you know, this is not a, a personal thing. I just wanna make that very clear cause I've served on boards with them and, and they're great. Um, but they are also already on the Planning Commission and, uh, John Bano's also on the, uh, the, uh, Library Building Committee. I think one of them's on the Historic Preservation Committee.
Um, not, uh, John is, yeah.
John is, okay. So, um, you know, uh, I, I think, you know, the, the board has been moving towards getting more, more newer voices, more diversity. And just the fact that, um, a lot of the, what the Art Committee would be looking at would also be seen by the Planning Commission, which they're both on. Um, I'm wondering if, just making a, a request that maybe you reconsider those two and look at some of the other applicants to?
Yeah, and I, I'll tell you why, why I picked them. Because of their, John's an architect. And I think that's important in terms of we put stuff out, architects, structures. And, and Patrick sort of has the same kinda background. And so I wanted those artists. I wanted Desiree, cause she's an artist and she's got some really good ideas for, um, and then I, you know, Doris, because I wanted somebody in the, in the business in downtown. So, um, it, you know, if they have to not vote on something, then they won't vote. But they, they both put in applications and, um, I, I like, I like both of them. I think they're, I think they're both very good. They'll be good on the committee.
Yeah, and I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I just feel like if we're trying to bring in more voices, that there might be other good people too that aren't getting the opportunity. And I guess, um, I, I think there was another artist applicant. The name is escaping me now, but, um, there, uh, I'm sorry, not artist, architect. Um, and so I guess?
No, I don't think so.
Um, I think there was. I would have to look at the notes.
Yeah, I don't.
But yeah, I, um, yeah, I, I think there's maybe some other people who might fit the same qualifications.
I didn't see any other architect, Amanda.
Okay, I, I did. I'll, I'll see what I can pull up in my email. But I, it's, it's my understanding too that if, and this is just an if, I don't know where the rest of the board is, but if we wanted to approve the five, the other five tonight, we could. And they could go start doing stuff because that is enough for a quorum. We could do that. Um, if, but I don't know where the rest of the board is.
The other, but there's six.
Oh, sorry, six.
Well, you'd be the sixth, I think.
No, I'm seven.
You're seven. So there's six appointees. So you're right. So there'd be four then plus you. So those five.
That's what you're suggesting, proving the other five minus those two.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna request to be approved, the ones I picked. I, I'm very confident in both John Bano and Patrick Melzon. Do a good job.
Go ahead. My understanding of what Amanda's saying is not that they wouldn't do a good job. Is that, that they're serving on other committees and they've served on those other committees for a long period of time. And that perhaps having new voices would be a good idea. And I, I have to agree as somebody on the DEI committee where we've been talking a lot about how to include new and different voices in committees and, and make, make a more welcoming place that has more diverse voices. I have to agree. And I, I don't know John. I do know Patrick. Um, and I, you know, they're fine people. It's not about them.
And I will say that Desiree, Michelle, Doris and Lincoln are not on other committees. So I was, I did take that into account of getting some new, new people. But I also want, I want some of the expertise too. We're, you know, this is brand new for us. We're, we're sort of flying by our pants. And so, uh, we need some of that expertise. And, and they, they applied, so they, they're willing to put in the time.
So, um, I guess, I, I hear your point. And, um, while I, I do see that they're willing to put in the time and that's, that's great. Because they, um, the roles on the Planning Commission will give them an opportunity potentially to also have oversight over this, the, um, any public art and where it might go. Their, their expertise isn't lost. It's, um, adding more voices to that conversation. So they'll, they'll still have a role in, in, in discussing the public art, where it might go, talking about structural integrity or whatnot. But it'll be happening with their art, their current roles in the Planning Commission versus, um, roles on the Public Art Committee. And I think since we have, um, Amanda, you mentioned twelve applicants, um, since we have other people who are, are interested. It's not like we only have, you know, those seven, or seven folks. Since we have other people who are interested and we're not taking away their voice, their role in the Planning Commission will still allow them to have a voice on this particular topic. I think, I, I'm in agreement that I think we should widen that, widen that, um, the voices and, and make more seats at the table for new folks who are interested.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to stick because I, because I very, I thought about this very, very carefully. And because of their expertise, regardless, I mean, I wasn't thinking just because they're on the Plan Commission, I want them on this. It's because the architect and Patrick is basically engineer, that, that's why I picked them. So I'm going to stick with my recommendations. And you may vote it down, that's fine. I'm very thoughtful about who I'm picking. And, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. I mean, again, they're not, they're qualified.
And there's four, there's four new people that had, are not on anything. So I took that into account too. So.
Looking for the architect. I could be wrong.
Yeah, Amanda, I don't, I don't think so.
Randy?
Yeah.
One point, we've, we've talked about this in, not this context, but other pieces where, um, you know, community members or board members have been wanting, wanting to be involved in changes to whether it's zoning code or, um, you know, different projects around the village. And often having some of these voices that are kind of an earlier stage in the process. So whether it's working with artists and reviewing applications, talking about how it would be physically installed and designed. It's helpful when we get to a Planning Commission meeting for some of those conversations to have already happened and have some of that expertise earlier in the conversation versus kind of waiting to a later step in the process and then somebody coming in and making a suggestion that might, you know, require a redesign of the project. Um, we've talked about the, some of these public art funds already have a, a time limit and to the extent they can be, um, the timeframe they can be spent. And so I'm trying to be mindful of that to make sure that, um, this committee can go through their process, um, request proposals, review them. And we haven't really talked about yet, you know, what the Planning Commission review would look like. It'd probably just be a site plan review, so it wouldn't come to the board. So that Planning Commission staff would probably be the final approval. Um, and I think, um, you know, I know these guys well, of course. I, um, I can see both sides of the argument, but I do see some value in having some, you know, construction and design expertise on the board and just seeing folks that are familiar with our process, um, can help educate, um, you know, the other board members. Cause it is certainly a big learning curve to come into a committee that, um, people have been on.
Yeah, and, and, and that's kinda what I was thinking, cause we're, we're starting from scratch. And we've, we've never done this before. And these guys have some expertise that I think will be valuable to the, to the committee. So, that's my reasoning. Yeah, Phil?
There's a ad hoc, uh, committee, uh, coming with the sunset date might be on that?
Yes, it, uh, I think this one is the end of twenty twenty-four. We gave it two years, yeah.
And at that time, uh, the board would have to, uh, reform it or reestablish and also reappoint these people. Is that accurate?
No, so it would just dissolve at that point. So.
Unless we?
Unless you change, yep, the ordinance, yeah.
Right. And then the people would need to be reappointed.
Yes.
Just in the interest of moving things along, let's find out where everybody is. Motion to approve as presented.
Second. Mike, you had your hand up. Do you wanna, something to say?
Yeah, um, I mean, we've been talking about getting diversity in our committees and, well, I understand wanting the expertise. I don't necessarily understand needing a third of your committee with that expertise. Um, so I'm gonna oppose, I think.
Okay.
Not cause I have any problem with either of them. I think they're both very competent and really good work for our village. But I also think that we need to stop dipping in the same pool over and over and over again to get people for our boards.
Alright, there's a motion in a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
No.
Alright, I don't know how many no's.
So that was a three to four, right? Four no's?
Four no's, yeah.
Yep. So it failed.
Okay. Alright, let's go to eight D. Uh, review of?
We could entertain another motion.
Good.
I was gonna say, did we, I was gonna ask if we wanted to entertain a motion for the remaining committee members?
Yes, we can.
And so we can at least get the committee started and get it.
Alright.
We can do that.
So, so the, the issue is, is Patrick and John, is that correct with the, the board?
The issue is not Patrick and John. The issue is getting diverse faces. I have no problem.
Well, remember though, folks, I, I put four new people. They're, they're not on any committees.
And, and we're, I think what Mike is doing is clarify that we have no issue with John and Patrick. That is not, that is not it. It's that we have the opportunity to include more voices in a committee in the village and we would like to take that opportunity.
Alright. So, so why don't we, if you guys are okay, let's entertain a motion for the four plus me. Because one, one of the things I'm concerned about is, we're, we're, we're coming up on this money gonna be gone if we don't start moving.
Absolutely. I move to approve those five.
So I, what I will do is look at the other applications, the remaining. Or we could?
You know, again, saying, you know, we're really neat, would like an architect, you know, put out, put out the word. I mean, I'm open to?
I would like an architect on the committee.
Yeah, I mean, I get that. And I did not find, you, you were correct.
Yeah, I would like one. Yeah, or an engineer.
I thought there was, but there isn't. So.
Alright, so i-if we're, let's have a motion to accept the four plus me, so we can get started.
Mike moved. Was there a second?
Mike? Okay, alright, Carlene. So, alright, any other discussion? And I will look, look at the other ones and see if there's, or we may have to repost it.
Sure.
Okay, alright. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And just as a point of reference, the, the DEI committee is talking about various ways to get the word out besides the regular postings that a lot of people don't necessarily see, so that there is an opportunity for more diverse voices to apply.
Well, I'm, I am excited about having Desiree, believe me. She's an excellent artist and she's got lots of good ideas for this, so. Alright, so let's go to eight D. Oh, this'll be a quick one, won't it? The budget? The budget, yay, Martin?
Do you wanna take a quick break?
You, do we need another break? Or are we okay?
Eight oh nine.
You wanna?
Yeah.
Phil voted.
Carleen, I'm asking you now.
You're asking me now.
All right, another quick one.
Five minutes.
All right.
All right, all right, so Martin, you're on.
All right.
Martin, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. And Candy's gonna set the alarm.
Alarm goes off, we're out of here.
Really loud alarm.
All right, the best part of the meeting.
Yeah.
So you have the budget document in your packet, updated from the previous meeting. There were some changes to what's in the packet and I handed that out, it should have been at your, your desk there, things were a little bit rosier in the packet version and now we've kind of taken a little bit of a step back again, but we'll, we'll talk about that. So, so for tonight, we have, obviously had Carlson, Detman talk about the compensation study and I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit, a couple of changes from the previous meeting and then I think we'll, we'll breeze through some of these other funds pretty quickly. And then I think we're probably in a place where we can publish the public notice, there certainly might be some updates that might come along the way here, but we can talk about those at November fourteenth, we can talk about them on the night, or on the night of November twenty-first as well, we can still make changes to the budget at night and then of course we'll always amend the budget too whenever we need to, so. So in terms of things that have changed since the last meeting, we did get our general transportation aid numbers, which is the last state aid program we were waiting on and it actually turned out better again this year than we thought it was going to be. So just last year, we were at five hundred forty-six thousand, we took a big jump this year to six twenty-eight and we're jumping again to six fifty-four, about a twenty-five thousand dollar increase and that's all a result of we're just doing more projects. So this aid program is calculated based on essentially helping yourself, so if you're doing more street construction projects, maintenance and putting money towards that, the state says we'll help you out and they give us more money for that, so we can offset that on our operations expenses, public works. Actually, you can offset police expenses and other things like that too, so we just kind of use it as a general purpose revenue. So that's a good thing, so we should keep up with street projects and, and maintenance and all that sort of stuff, so we can keep that number higher. Last time we talked about the fire district and opportunity to do, exempt our increase in our levy as a result of our district's assessed charges, we were kind of optimistic and turns out that we also have to calculate capital expenses into that calculation, which makes us go way beyond what threshold for taking advantage of that exemption would be, so we won't qualify for that this year. I just want to say I appreciate Glenn, Chief Lynn's buyer, Fire District Commission was already set to get together this week to, to make a minor change to qualify for that exemption, but unfortunately we won't and we can't take advantage of that. Couple other smaller things, we do get to take advantage of an increase in levy as a result of annexations. So any lands that we annexed in the year, we get to increase our levy by the amount of town taxes that were paid on that property in the previous year, so there's a really, really tiny amount, six hundred eighty-three dollars that we've added into the levy as a result of some of those annexations. And then this one is a little bit.
Problem solved.
Yeah, yes, problem solved. Another exemption that Lisa caught here in between meetings was a jurisdictional transfer exemption, so we took advantage of this a few years ago with Jefferson Street, but when a governmental unit transfers a service to another governmental unit, the, the unit that is taking on that service gets to bump up their levy as a result of that and the one that's giving up the service has to decrease their levy. So we've entered fifteen thousand as an increase to the levy, since now we'll be taking on North Main Street after last year's project and we'll be doing the annual maintenance and snowplowing and traffic striping for that, so we get to take a little bit of a bump there. I understand the fifteen thousand was a very in-depth calculation that Jeff made.
Is that what you told him?
Yeah. But the county will actually have to take a reduction and so we've communicated that to them as well, so. So the numbers following up on that are a little different again from what was in the packet, so this is the sheet that will reflect those accurately. So we're able to increase our general property tax a little bit and our general transportation aids went up a little bit and so as a result of that, we were able to make some adjustments on some of those unsustainable revenues that we talked about at the last meeting, so we were able to get rid of the fund balance that was balancing our budget, which is a very good thing. We were able to take off about ten thousand dollars of the expenditure restraint funds and move those elsewhere and then we are bringing back all the post office rental income, all seventy thousand dollars to balance the budget, so again, that's gonna be something that we're gonna need to address because in eighteen months we're not gonna have that money anymore. As far as the expenditure restraint money, we're very confident that we are gonna qualify for that for the twenty twenty-four budget because it's, that calculation is based on CPI and of course CPI is crazy high right now, we'll never spend as much money as we would be allowed to spend there. So we'll, we'll have that for twenty twenty-four most likely, but beyond that, we'll, we'll see. So what that, what happens there and again, stuff that's on the screen in the packet is updated, but we were, we had to back out general fund contingency, so there's nothing budgeted for that, we added the fire district contribution back in there, we are able to give ten thousand dollars to the sick leave fund, which is a good thing, we need to keep building that back up. And then one of the other things that we were gonna try to do is send some money to some capital accounts, but we won't be able to do that either. So the, the levy and the tax rate look actually more similar to what you saw last week. And so as you can see on your sheet, the tax rate is actually effectively flat, even just a slight decrease, but the total levy is up about ten percent and then you can see on that last page there, the impact on assessed home, and so the effect on an average assessed home, that was three hundred and forty-one thousand last year and is four hundred and six thousand this year, is about a sixteen percent increase in the village portion of property taxes, which is about three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then if your, your assessed value went up lower or stayed relatively flat, you may actually see a flat amount of prop village taxes or maybe even a very, very, very tiny decrease. So our budget kind of looks a little bit better than last time, it's certainly in a form that we can definitely approve, but we're definitely in a place where if we don't do a couple of things now, we're gonna get to the twenty twenty-four budget and almost certainly be forced to do some things. So I talked a little bit about that on some of these pages in the budget document, you know, last week we talked about some of these other revenue options that we could potentially take advantage of, the wheel tax being one, I was able to get some numbers from the DMV on the number of vehicles registered in Oregon, you can see eight thousand six hundred, you can see if we put a tax on that, you can see the amount of revenue that's generated from that. The other thing that we talked about was the streetlight special charge, so we are able to take the amount of money that we, we expend towards streetlight expenses and electricity on those and place that on our utility bills and so that would generate about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Because it's under the statute that you have to set that up under, there is kind of a little bit of legwork that you have to do, it's not as straightforward as just dividing and doing all of that, it's, you have to have a reasonable basis that underlies how you make that calculation, so there has to be some analysis work that's, that's completed, there needs to be some legal work that's completed. And so Ellers, our financial advisor, has done that for a couple of communities and so we have to expend a little bit of money to, to get that up and running, but we certainly could do it at least for half of the year next year by, by July or June. And then we talked about referendum as well, I think if we don't use some of these options, the wheel tax or the streetlight special charge, or we don't cut expenditures, we're, we're definitely on a pathway to a referendum sooner rather than later, I think even with doing these options, we're at least two years away from a referendum and so we'll have to think if that's something that's coming forward here, we'll have to think about what we're going to do for that referendum and how much. I talked a little bit about in the packet, the city of Milton is going to referendum this year in November and they're doing it for adding staff and increasing staff wages and I think that's probably something that we would wanna look at as well, certainly it takes a lot to bite off to add employees in terms of salary benefit costs, so I think we'd be looking at, you know, upwards of a million dollar referendum to try to add, you know, five to six staff members if we can, we may wanna title the, the referendum differently, that it's for public safety or some other thing, but on the back end, we would wanna generate the savings to, to create staff in my opinion. A little bit on the employee compensation plan, I think as, as Patrick alluded to in his presentation, the reality is we can only do what we can with the money that we have and so out of this meeting, it's going to be, you know, myself and Lisa and Patrick and Carlson, Detman, going back and seeing how much money do we really have to play with here, we built in three percent into the budget, so there's a, a dollar figure there that we can work backwards and try to start implementing the compensation plan, but obviously you saw at a minimum, we're six percent off the, the market and if we wanna be a little bit more competitive, we're maybe, you know, upwards of, you know, seven to, to ten percent off and so obviously three percent isn't gonna cut it in that regard and that's where I think some of these other revenue options can come into play to generate more revenue if, if the board wants to be more aggressive in that regard. So I talked a little bit about the potential path forward here over the next couple of years and I've, I've talked already through some of these things, but if, if we really wanna be aggressive on employee compensation, I think there's options there for this year's budget that we can add more revenue to, to do that, but by twenty twenty-four, we're almost certainly gonna be in a position where we need to generate revenue or we need to cut something, so if we don't do that this year, we're, we're gonna be forced to be put in that position next year, so right now we kind of control our, our destiny to a certain degree. That's a picture of Lisa's garden right there.
She doesn't see, you see it?
Yeah, I did see that. That's the money tree starting to sprout there.
So, yeah, so that's where we're at, as I, I kind of talked through potential for a twenty twenty-four referendum for twenty twenty-five budget, next year, the only option really would be the spring election and I don't know if we're in a position to be ready for that, but in twenty twenty-four, we're, there's at least four elections that will be, Candy rolls her eyes, four elections next in twenty twenty-four, so that we can kind of target one election that we might consider better than another, but yeah, I went, I went over to the city of Milton, they're requesting up to seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars for staff and staff wages and of course I think that's kind of the direction that we're heading into is, you know, that's our big need as we grow, it's just taking out the, those big chunks of salary and benefits for, for new positions. I found this the other day, this was, this is the Milwaukee County Executive.
Yep.
So I think, I think it was Mike that made the comment last time, if, if other communities are going through this, absolutely, it's, everybody's going through this, obviously Middleton's going through referendum. Communities are, are certainly at different places, some have exhausted all their options, some have options, we have maybe a couple of options here, you know, certainly communities that haven't been growing at all, they've already hit their cliff and have gone over it in some fashion, I know when I worked for the city I know when I worked for the city of Monroe, which is not a community that's necessarily growing very much. They hit it probably about five or six years ago, and, you know, they had to cut about five positions out of their budget. They went that way rather than generating revenue, so. It's a, it's a universal thing, as Candy, or as Carleen alluded to at the beginning of the meeting. It's, there's a lot of issues at the state that are causing it, and inflation certainly hasn't, hasn't helped. So. I'll go through some of the funds, but I guess a couple of things that I want to get out of this meeting are. Is this, are these new revenue options something that we want to consider as part of this budget? If they're not, then, you know, we have what we have, and we'll go back and do compensation, you know, the best way that we can. If these are things that you want to move forward with, we'll have different dollar amounts, obviously, to be more aggressive. Or if there's some other potential path forward that you want to do right now.
All right, Mike and Amanda?
Yeah, I would like to go forward with a wheel tax aggressively, and I would also like to go forward with the streetlight tax. I think the sooner that we address our revenue shortfalls, the better off we'll be in the long term. And the second reason for doing this for me is, is the, I feel like the last few years, we've balanced our budget on the backs of our employees. And I would like to more aggressively compensate employees and implement the salary plan, the compensation plan. I think it also sets us up better for when we do have a referendum. I think it's really hard to ask people for more money so other people can get raises. But if we can take that out of the picture and say, well, it's a public safety issue. Or we schedule the referendum for the first of the four elections in twenty twenty four. And say, well, if you don't vote for this, you won't get the next three elections. Sort of deal, just kidding. That we would be much better set up for basically politically being able to motivate a referendum.
Amanda?
Okay, everything that Mike just said, a thousand percent. And especially just to shout out to the staff. I mean, I know we sometimes don't take all your advice, but, but you guys are like the best. I mean, every single one of you, we value your opinions. And, and we have been cutting, like Mike said, balancing the budget on the back of employees. And that goes all the way down to every employee, so, yeah, what Mike said.
Carleen?
Agreed, agreed, agreed. And I'm just going to say it again. This isn't, this does not have to be this way. And again, I'm going to point out that the president of the League of Municipalities, who is the mayor of Manitowoc. Strongly recommends that board members send letters to the legislature, letting them know that this is a crisis. Not like they don't already know, but reiterating that this is a crisis, and it's happening across the board. And municipalities need more support, period.
Question for Carleen, is it better if we do individual letters? Or like if you wrote one, I might sign that, like maybe we could do it as a board, as a possibility, that might have more power?
Or we could even pass a resolution as a board. I mean, I'm happy to write something up, it's a resolution that we pass as a board.
I think that'd be great.
For the next agenda.
Thank you.
So, Mike, I have a question for you, because one of the things that I'm. Concerned about is we got, we got this budget, which is going to increase village. We got, we got, and if you look closely at the school referendum, it's a reoccurring, it's a big. Yeah, and these two, I'm concerned, that's, that's for taxes. I mean, and I'm all for making sure we have enough money, but I'm a little concerned that if we do them all. All at once, that's, that's a lot.
It is.
Yeah.
I'm concerned too, but, I mean, if you look at our budget projections, we don't have a lot of runway.
Yeah.
Before we go into, you know, really bad territory quickly.
I would feel better, and Martin, I don't even know if we can do this, I mean, you said the light tax will take a while. If even the wheel tax, if we just didn't do them all at once. That's.
Well, the streetlight tax couldn't be done before mid next year.
Yeah, but even, even if we prolong the wheel tax until a little bit, I, I'm just, I mean, we're all getting, we all get them, especially for. The seniors and about being taxed out, I'm concerned about that. I'm not, I don't know what the answer is, but I mean, we have to, we got to take them into consideration too, here, so. Go ahead, Jenna, you had your hand up. Go ahead, Derek.
Just to kind of echo some of Randy's concern, the people that live on a fixed income are going to feel this the hardest. And ultimately, I think that both things do need to happen. I mean, I think the wheel tax and the streetlight tax both need to happen. Just hope that when we do the wheel tax, we take it on more of an incremental base, maybe start a little lower, and then after a couple of years, increase it. As opposed to just socking everyone with forty dollars worth of bills straight up front. And it might be, make it a little bit easier for those on a fixed income to digest over a period of time.
I mean, also, I think our utility rates are, I set the goal, right, Jeff, to go up too?
Well, utility rates are, they're going up, I think they're going up five percent this year.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, we would just be passing in the future, as I understand it, we would just be passing those increases directly on to. Our population, our residents.
So that, that's just my concern. I, I get everybody's argument about wanting to make sure our staff is taken care of, and that we have. But we got to think about this too, this, not everybody's got lots of money. So that's just, I want to say it, and I said it. Go ahead, Jenna.
So a couple of things. To your point about the school, to the point about the school referendum, it is huge. And I just like to bring up to folks that our state government promised to fund their schools at two-thirds of their costs. And like the mid to late nineties, and that still hasn't happened. So when we talk about passing a resolution about wanting the state government to start doing something, I, yes, absolutely. You know, sitting on five billion dollars of our money so far.
Six billion dollars.
Six billion dollars? The numbers keep changing. So, but I do have concerns about a wheel tax specifically. To Derek's point, people on fixed incomes, and also people who are on the lower income bracket of this community are going to be feeling that. They're going to be bearing that cost the most, their incomes are less flexible. And when we look at these taxes, specifically a wheel tax in a community that has no public transportation, no shuttles, no metro service. They're, they're the ones that are going to be the most impacted by this potential tax increase. And so I think specifically around the wheel tax, we need to be very diligent about how we analyze about the thread going forward. Because there's going to be a lot of folks who are already struggling in this community who aren't going to be able to afford that.
Amanda?
Do we have any capability of graduating these taxes in any way, based on income or something? I don't know.
Yeah, well, no, it actually has to be a flat amount. The wheel tax is required.
So is that streetlight too? Does it have to be divided equally or how's that?
So the streetlight has to be, it has to be, there has to be an analysis done, and there has to be sort of a. It's like the water and sewer, right? There's like a procedure that has to occur, and it has to be fair and justifiable. So not necessarily based on, you know, graduating or income.
Okay, I was afraid.
Derek, I see Derek and then Mike. Go ahead.
Just a question to kind of follow up on Amanda's, if we did start out with, say, a fifteen to twenty dollar wheel tax, could we then, a year or two later, up into thirty to forty?
Yes. The only caveat I will say to that, and it's something I mentioned in the document here, is. The state legislature has tried to close this tax in the last couple of sessions. It didn't get through. And the, at least the pieces of legislation that were proposed would have grandfathered communities that had introduced it. But you wouldn't have been able to change your amount. And so that, this, the legislative session is, is going to start again in spring, in early next year. And depending on which way the wind blows, we may see that legislation reintroduced again. Should be part of your calculation as well.
All right, Mike is up, I think. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I was just going to say, so if we go back quite a few years, back when this was starting to get tight again, and communities were forced to start doing things. You know, they had the loophole of starting a stormwater utility. And you could, you could start a stormwater utility, you could, and it took a lot of the burden off of these communities, because now all of a sudden, they're charging for stormwater utilities. Couple of years later, the state legislature came in and said, yes, you can still start a stormwater utility, but you have to take whatever that, whatever that levy amount is that you're generating in the stormwater utility. You have to take it off of your levy.
Yep.
The user fees.
The user fees have to come off, so it was a net zero gain, so they took that away. So a lot of these things that we're looking at. Are, I just envision the door closing, and I think that's what Mark Martin's saying. So I mean, if you go with a twenty dollar a year wheel tax this year, that door closes. You, you may be able to increase it to forty dollars, but you'll have to take that off of, probably have to take that additional.
Negative adjustment, yeah.
Same with, who knows with, I mean, anything else. I mean, this is what happens when, when your back's against the wall, right? You have to, you start looking at, okay, what other mechanisms do you have? And you're always playing catch up with legislature going, we're going to close that door and close that door. So I think that's why some of the urgency with some of this is, and I'm not a big fan of extra taxes, but I, seeing it from our angle, I don't know many other alternatives.
Yeah, Carleen?
So I want to make it clear, I'm not a big fan of taxes.
Yeah.
I'm not. I, I view this community as, as a really wonderful place to live. Our property taxes right now, when you look at the chart, are next to the bottom. We have adequate services now that are improving. And if we are to keep services at the level or better that they are now for a growing community, we're stuck. We don't have a choice except to determine to do one or more of these things. No one likes to be forced to go to referendum. Revenues have been consistently cut, especially over the last ten years. I mean, don't get me started on public schools and how much the revenue to public schools has been cut. So it's tough, it's really tough. But we have to do this to maintain public safety, to maintain services for our seniors, to have a decent public library, a better public library. There is no option. So we just have to figure out how to make it the most palatable possible. In order for us to be able to provide the services to our community that we want and that the residents of our community want. No one wants to tax people. I don't like paying taxes, but I do.
All right, Mike, Mike is waiting.
Well, Phil hasn't spoken.
Thank you. And gerrymandering too.
And gerrymandering, yes, thank you.
But. What I've, sorry. My own jokes. That'll happen. Anyway, what I'm, you know. Nobody wants to raise taxes, but we have to run this community in a fiscally responsible way. And if we're at a fiscal cliff and approaching a structural deficit. And we dodged by very little of using fund balance to fund operations, none of those things are good. So. Again, as many have said, no one wants to raise taxes, but we have, we have to keep the ship on a, you know, afloat. And that's about the only way we're going to be able to do it. Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, unfortunately, none of the tax options that are available to a community are progressive. They're all flat taxes, and they all hit every, the poorest people the worst. We have to be fiscally responsible. We can't let the village run into a hole. I think that there are things that we can cut services on, where Jeff has a forum on Saturday, I believe, about changing our mowing policy, which has got to be labor intensive. And if we change that, we should be able to save, I would think, a somewhat significant amount of money. Maybe there's, and maybe there's other things that, you know, Public Works does, and, you know, maybe we don't plow the streets if there's only, I don't know.
I've advocated for years that we don't need clean streets all the time.
Right.
You learn to drive on the snow.
So maybe we make some of those changes that help us save money. But ultimately, none of those will close the deficit gap that I see in Eller's report. And we're going to have to do something like this, and, you know, to say, I totally get, I mean, I don't like paying taxes. I feel I'm going on a fixed income probably this coming year, it's going to start hitting me more as well. But, you know, the, the choice of less taxes is really, well, can the employees, can we run the government this coming year on our employees as well? You know, we need to fund the government to do what it needs to do, and we need to do it in a way that, you know, is fair to our staff. I certainly could see, you know, putting off the thing on streetlights till later next year. But I think the wheel tax, we should get in place, and we should do it before the legislature meets in twenty twenty-three. And I think we should do it at a forty dollar value, so that we get the money out that we possibly can out of it, because we are at a fiscal cliff.
I would just say, I hear a lot of people, legislators, saying at the state level, you know, talking about how we have to. You know, run your budget like your household budget, right? They don't want us spending, spending, spending. Problem is households have the option to get a second job, or to, you know, do something on the side and earn more money. And at the same time, the state government has tied our hands and said, nope, you can't do that. And so that's the big difference here, and so we have to exercise all the options that are available to us until that changes. Until people vote, please vote. That's all I have to say, vote.
All right. So where are we at?
So I think what I heard is we should. Plan to implement a compensation study based upon a forty dollar wheel tax. And at least a half year of the streetlight special charge.
Would you like that as a motion?
Yeah. Doesn't, it doesn't commit you to doing it in the budget at this point. You can always take it back out, but puts it on the record for us to know that for sure.
All right, Mike, you made a motion.
Well, can you state the motion?
The motion is, is that we will implement a forty dollar wheel tax yet this year. And that we will look at implementing a streetlight tax in mid twenty twenty-three.
Okay, two second. Amanda, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm voting no.
I'm voting no.
Okay.
All right.
So Martin, yeah, next steps for us then?
So, all right, well, as I said, we'll, we'll work on that, and we'll bring it back. We might be able to bring it back to the November fourteenth meeting and just go over it. But we'll have the public hearing and final approval of the budget at the twenty-first meeting.
Okay.
So just really quickly, I know, we're getting to nine o'clock here, so. Maybe I can kind of cut this short a little bit. So we were going to talk about. The special funds and some of the other funds that are at the, that are non-general fund. I guess, rather than just page through all these, they've been in your packet for, you know, the last couple of weeks. know, the last couple of weeks, if there's any questions, I can answer any, I think I'll just highlight, we did get ten thousand dollars into the sick leave fund, which is good, and I think you've seen some of these other, these other ones as well that are pretty straightforward, we talked about the K L T V franchise fund and some of the challenges we may be facing there in the future, a lot of these other funds are pretty nominal, and only really spend what they get, I'm just paging through to see if there's anything to highlight at all, and we talked about some of the changes with the room tax, take advantage of that, just a note on the workforce housing fund, we we originally pretty much spent all that money, or dedicated that money to a couple of projects last year, Habitat for Humanities, I think for sure, moving forward, but we've heard from North Point on some of the changes that might be happening with their project, and we're still kind of working through some of that with them, but they may forego asking for some of those housing funds, which would mean we have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund still towards a future project, which is a good thing, there's the thumb right there, go ahead and keep that going. Our T I F districts are pretty straightforward, they're paying off their debt service to the best that they can, T I three has always kind of been a little underwater, but there, it's getting closer to paying off all of its expenses, there's some pretty good in-depth T I reports in there that Ellers does for us every year, that can walk you through some of that stuff, T I four is moving in a positive direction, we've had some really good projects in there, that that T I suffered because of a negative adjustment that happened really early in its lifetime, that kind of set it back, but now we're starting to see quite a lot of development come online, and we'll start to see it get out of its its deficit as well, potentially start paying back the the general fund. T I five is really turning around, everyone's really gonna quickly get out of its its red right now, and out of its deficit, and and really actually start generating quite a bit of increment, and hopefully Adam Coyle moves forward with his his apartment project in North Main, which will generate even more increment there, we got a couple of projects planned, street projects planned in that T I a couple of years out here, but you can see the turnaround that happens over here, and just the the projected generation of increment, which Ellers is usually pretty conservative on, so there's a lot of money that's could be generated within that T I. I do have an overview of how the tax increment levy calculation is made, it's really confusing, and you'll look like this person at the end of that, but I tried to explain it as best I could. On the utility side, we've talked a little bit about them, and Ellers was here during the financial management report, and kind of went over the finances for those those two utilities, not much is changing there, we're working on potential rate increases, which will most likely happen in in 2023, they're not substantial in a dollar amount, they look substantial when you're saying thirty-one percent, but when you go back and look at our rates, the dollars actually aren't that significant, those will be coming, and we have some pretty big capital projects coming with those utilities in the next couple of years, so it'll be good to stay on top of our rates. And then, a couple fiduciary funds that really have any consequence from a budgeting standpoint, but we got a report on them, and then there's our municipal budget summary, which we gotta get in the paper by October twenty eighth, so if there's any questions on any of that stuff, happy to answer.
All right, not seen any, Martin.
Thanks, Martin.
Yep, all right, that's.
Oh, so, sorry, so the resolution that's gonna be on here, you guys don't have to pass, because we don't qualify.
You mean, next one, nine eight, yeah, I was gonna say that, yeah, we're gonna pass over nine eight, taken care of. Nine V is fut- future agenda items, items, gives board members opportunity to place items and new business on future agenda for discussion. Anybody have anything? Yep.
I'm gonna put, take other resolution for the.
Okay, yeah, mm-hmm, okay, anybody else? Okay, let's go to ten, we're coming home. Report of village officers, village administrative report was in our packet, ten B, Director of Community Development Report on Dane County Regional Housing Strategy, Elise is begging for a participant volunteer.
Ironically, John Bayno was my first volunteer, but he, so the, we're looking to to have a more permanent representative on our, the Dane County Regional Housing Strategy Committee, they're a working group that is just gonna be meeting for one year, it's the last Wednesday every month, sometimes on Zoom, last month it was actually at Lakefront Park, it was their family heritage center, but working, again, on a county basis to identify housing goals and needs, and then kind of come up with a, an overall plan that we can all hopefully have some say and representation within, so all of our neighboring communities are part of this, there's a usually elected or appointed representative from the community or board, and then a staff member, unfortunately, I won't be able to attend the October meeting because we already have a neighborhood meeting for Autumn Ridge scheduled that same night, it would be Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of October, but if you're interested as a board member, or if you have somebody on any of the committees that you're a part of that you feel is interested in housing, let me know, they don't necessarily have to commit for the whole year, but at least to attend, and then I'll be able to attend in the future. I'm definitely interested, but if we have other folks who, from the community who are interested, I'll step back, but. I don't see anybody yet, so.
Yeah.
Emails after this, I'm leaving that option open.
All right, very good, thank you.
See you later.
All right, ten C, Assistant Director of Public Works Report on the lead service line replacement project, Jeff and I bet you want Lauren, would like Lauren to come up.
I'd like Lauren to come.
Yep.
Lauren.
Come to the mic.
Please come on down.
We're gonna, we'll give you three minutes, Lauren, no, just kidding.
Start the timer now. Well, you guys have seen this one many, many times, so I will try to keep it brief and turn it into what is probably a feel-good story mixed with an Academy Awards acceptance speech, bear with me, I know you guys are tired, so I'll make it fast, but the project has come to an end finally, at last count, we totaled up, we replaced fifty-three public side services and sixty-two private side services, and about forty-six hundred lineal feet of lead and galvanized pipe in the village, which is pretty exciting, more exciting, especially given the discussion tonight, is that we came in, let's see, about thirty percent below budget on the total project, so that, yeah, that was about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars total, we were able to give back about six hundred and forty thousand dollars in funding to the D N R, which is exciting for other communities that had bigger problems than they knew, and needed that money to get out of their own holes. We were also at about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in village ARPA funds that we ended up having to pay out, that's almost a hundred thousand dollars less than we expected and was in the contract, so that's almost a hundred thousand dollars that can go towards other future capital projects, and I kind of wanna highlight that this is really due to a huge effort by village staff, Don Gray gets called out a lot in this memo, absolutely, he was outdoing, he's our head water operator for those that don't know, but he basically functioned as full-time construction inspection staff on this project, he pretty much lived and breathed this for two months, in his absence, our other water utility staff really stepped in to fill that void, so that's Kevin and Amos, we had in our office Sue Poole, who's our clerk, doing all of the background work, and aside from these people being amazing, I want to illustrate that investing in great staff will save money for our community and our residents down the line, because again, we've got a hundred thousand dollars extra to work with on capital projects that we don't need to borrow, because these people stepped up and did their jobs and did them really, really well, so this is kind of a pitch that investing in the utility staff, investing in all of the staff is really in the best interest of this community, and it's numbers to prove it on this little project that we did, so, that's all I've got.
Congratulations, yeah. Jeff?
Randy, I'd like to add a little bit to this, because humbly Laurel, Lauren is, Laurel and Hardy here, no, Lauren.
It's nine o'clock.
Would not, would not toot her own horn here, and she's done a phenomenal job with this, when we started this, well, for the last, ever since I've been here, we've been under the impression that we had almost a hundred and sixty-four lead services in the village, the reason we don't know that number is, it's just not something that's been kept tracked through the number of years, and so when we, when we met, when we applied for the money, that was, that was an important part, to make sure that we had enough money for that, the difficulty, I think the monumental task that Lauren was really talking about is the upfront work to identify those areas of the village and all those services, the number of houses they had to go into, the number of potholes they had to, little holes they had to dig down to the services to really identify what they were, there was a lot of work done before a contractor ever hit the ground, and I would echo Lauren's statement, she did a phenomenal job with organizing this, keeping everybody on task with it, and it is a success, and I think at the end of the day, we're a community now that we can say, to the best of our knowledge, we don't have any lead services in our village, and I think that is, that's an excellent step in the right direction, because that's been a, that's been a concern of some of our residents, especially in our low-income and lower-income neighborhoods, where a lot of the lead services can be found, so I want to thank Lauren, thank Don, Amos, Kevin.
Sue.
Sue, I mean, just a wonderful team, and it's been fun to watch them work.
Thanks, guys.
And Jeff, too, you didn't mention yourself, but you helped write the grant, you helped to write the grant.
I just write memos, that's all.
Yeah, so, just, I wanna add on to, just one thing, this is a kind of one of the, this is a big deal, so it's, this is one of the biggest issues of public health issues in our generation right now, is this lead service line stuff, and the fact that we just kind of turned this out and just got it done, and, I don't know, I feel like one day we kind of woke up and decided we were gonna do this project, and then.
We met with D N R like about a year, a year ago at this time, we met with D N R.
On the phone, they had like six people, and.
Yeah, no, we were, I think we were down here, actually, and and they just kind of said, listen, this money's available, and but this, you have to act quickly, and put in the grant quickly, and of course, with a lot of support from D N R, so there's a lot of people to thank on this one.
You know, talk about really making a difference in people's lives, you know, removing this stuff, and when you think about childhood brain development, and all of the things that happened with these lead stuff.
At no cost to our residents.
At no cost to residents, we've just eliminated it.
Yeah, and what a great use of ARPA funds, too.
Yeah.
Yep.
So everybody, top-down, build board all the way down, and should be proud of this project.
Yep, all right. All right, that's, we're moving along, ten, ten D, Village Department Head, Staff, Consultant, comments, anybody?
I'm tired.
Yeah, yeah, so don't say anything. All right, anybody else, Rachel, or, well, I know Jennifer's happy tonight.
I say thank you.
Yeah, you're happy, good for you, all right.
Yeah.
Did you let folks know about Jenny?
Oh, yeah, that's.
I'll do that in a, I'll do that at a future time.
Okay.
All right, so let's get to ten E, Village Board, comments, anybody tired?
No, I'm just kidding.
All right, eleven, announcements, miscellaneous business?
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh.
You'll be quick.
All right.
It's not on the schedule here, because it's a out-of-schedule meeting for the ad hoc Sustainability Committee, but there will be a meeting this Thursday, October twentieth at five P M, right in this room, so it's our second meeting this month, we're starting to lay, hammer out the lay.
It's actually at the high school.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, it is at the high school, the, what's the room, Innovation.
Innovation, yep.
Mowing, mowing forum on Saturday. Okay. Nine to eleven.
Election training from one to four, anybody run Weson, one to four on Saturday?
All right, any other announcements or miscellaneous business? All right, we're packed up, let's go to twelve, let's have a motion to adjourn, Amanda and Carleen, all right, anybody object? We're, we're adjourned, let's go.